Do we have anybody?
There doesn't seem to be anyone else popping on, so I think we're good.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Fledge of Legions. Roll call.
Moeller.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest? Hearing none, approve agenda.
Look to approve the agenda.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, motion passes, approve minutes.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Uh, I think on, uh, we may want to make one little change there, about three lines up from our claims for payment. Waller said it was fun but frustrating at times and Bob Fuller dissolves a lot of credit for the first phase. I'd move to amend that to, uh,
Deserves, got it.
Well, Bob's kind of dissolved.
Good catch.
I usually let those little things like that go, but this time I figured I'd better point it out.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yes, we got our good phone system.
Sorry.
No. So. So if nothing else, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none, Scott.
Yeah, I've been looking into, uh, computerized maintenance, uh, management system for the buildings here. And, uh, I use one where I came from, Sazdak. This is from a different company and I think it's a little bit better than, than that one. The cost is eleven hundred dollars a year. We can track all our assets in here, every piece of equipment, we can track every building, we can break the buildings down and, uh, like the courthouse into the different departments and see where war repairs are, where a cost is, and tracks everything real well like that, we can control inventory with it. There's, the sky is kind of limit on those things depending on what's, how much effort you want to put into it and stuff. Um, so, with that said, I'd have two users on there, also, that'd be Cindy Carrington and then Joan Downing. Which would require them hopefully, I would be able to convince them to use their phones. Because obviously, like everything else, there's an, it has an app on there where they can, where the work orders can be sent directly to them if there's a work order type thing. And so I was thinking about, uh, seeing if they'll be able, they'll offer them a stipend for the use of their phones, so. I talked to Carrie about a little bit and got some pricing with the other departments were doing.
So this program would be eleven hundred dollars a year?
Mm-hmm.
And then, so you'd be able to track everything that's going on in here.
Right. Yep. Yeah.
Which is great for the future too.
Right, I mean. Right, right, you'll, you'll have that, you know, you'll build that, you'll build up that database eventually, of course, you know, there's nothing in there now. I've, I had it on a thirty day trial and I was plugging some stuff in there, I was plugging all the work orders in there, tracking the work orders and stuff. So I can pop it up and tell you exactly what I have in the entryway out here, we redid this entryway, put a ceiling in it and, uh, new exit light, new light and painted it, it was like seven hundred seventy-five dollars for that. But, you know, it, it tracks all that stuff for you and keeps a running cost and you can generate reports off it on any piece of equipment or any section of the building, like you can take the courthouse, like I was saying, or the sheriff's department and underneath, underneath those locations, you can have sub-locations like jail and you break it down to the jail and then, you know, how much money you're spending in there. You can look at your equipment like your boiler and you can break that down to, to, you have sub-pieces of equipment that are attached to that boiler, like your burner, the motor on the burner, you can break it right down and see where your money is going and stuff.
You could tell the last time you did repairs and stuff.
Yeah, and there's, you can do a PM program on there too, preventive maintenance program, which, you know, I'm working towards that, I am quite, of course, I'm not quite there yet, but well, let's start something up anyway to kind of just get the ball rolling so we can get kind of a hit on these fan coil units a little bit, but, but yeah, they're really nice systems and.
So you're talking less than a hundred bucks a month.
Yeah, it's pretty reasonable.
Well, what kind of a stipend are you looking for?
I think, I think Carrie was saying, she said that other people are getting three hundred a year. I believe, is that correct, Carrie?
Yes.
Yeah. I kind of talked to both of them and neither one of them seemed real favorable about using their phone, so. I guess I don't get it, but whatever.
So you don't even know if that's going to be, become an option then to spend the three hundred?
Well, at this point.
Yes, because he's going to say this is what we're doing, we're going to have to follow along on that app.
You know, I, you know, I.
So, I mean.
You know, I, I don't know what's other court, you know, tablets are kind of big and bulky and kind of takes the convenience side of the whole thing and unless it's a, unless it's a company phone or something we provide them with, but I don't know if that's feasible either.
I would think a stipend of three hundred dollars would be pretty good, so.
Yes.
Help pay your bill, help pay your bulk bill. You know, and you're not probably using it that much for this.
Well, it's twenty-five bucks a month, well, it is, it's not going to cost them anything to use it either.
That's just it.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's our convenience of them being able to use their phone. And they can, whenever they retire, they can just delete the app and it's not on there anymore.
Right.
Right.
Scott, uh, if we decided to discontinue this program, say, three years out or four years out, is there a means for us to capture the, those records that we can keep them afterwards then, or do you have to keep this program up to, uh, keep that history?
Nope, the data is ours. All that data was ours, we'd be able to gather that back and do whatever with it, but it'll be our data.
Yeah, well, the trick though is to have the data in a form that you can retrieve, is the data going to be like in, uh, Word format or something that we, we know that we'll be able to keep using?
I'll have to look into that and see. You know, I'll, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask that question.
Yeah, that's my, that's my point is that, uh, yeah, if we discontinue the program and it's all encrypted in something that's unique to that program, we don't have an record anymore unless we're able to print it somehow.
Right. Okay, I'll ask that question.
Should be able to print.
Pardon me?
Should be able to print that, I would think.
Yeah, we'd probably rather not, we'd probably rather have it on a memory stick or something like that.
Yeah. Want at least semi-annually or annually to print.
Yeah.
The records.
I'll ask them and see.
Yeah, I, you know, for me, printing would be great, you know, fine, I, I've got something like, uh, four, five, six, uh, three-ring binders of, uh, of commission, commission business that I've printed off myself here, but, uh, that's because I'm old-fashioned.
I hear you there. I used to do all that hard file, it kind of got annoying after a while.
Takes up a lot of space.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it'd be a great asset to the whole operation, once it's implemented and up and rolling, first, you know, they'll help me with implementation too, but that's another three hundred and fifty dollars and I said, well, I gotta go around and collect all the data, I just will enter it myself instead of sending it to you to enter it, so. Yeah, I don't know if there's any real
value there.
Value there, right?
With. Just once.
Right.
On a side thing with it, would that be available for all of us to send in work orders also, or would it still be like an email to you as?
It, that has a requestor, uh, requesters feature and there's no charge for the requesters, you can have as many requesters as you want, so I'd send an invite out.
Streamline that whole process.
I'd send it, I'd send the invite out to everybody and they'd have that work order form right there on their desktop, whatever, you know, and I don't know what the county shop does or if they're interested in something like that, but, you know, you could, you can use it for out there too.
Yeah, they still, they still use paper.
Yeah, you know. This, yeah, you can, you can make this thing grow, uh, or being you want to make it.
Let it be a real plus if they could, if it was something they could use.
Yeah, they could. You know, I, I don't know. It's probably going to bump up your costs some because, uh, there's a monthly fee for every user.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm a user and Cindy would be the user, Jonah being user, and I suppose out there, I don't know, you might have a couple more. So it's, it's going to increase, but still, it's pretty reasonable, the system I was using at Sazdak was, uh, that was three grand a year and I don't think it quite has the bells and whistles that this one does at eleven hundred.
So it's, it's at eleven hundred with, with three users right now?
Right, yep, that's what it'd be.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to prove that, plus the, the stipend for the, for the cell phones.
So I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? My only one would be going forward was, can we take the eleven hundred out of the building fund and the six hundred out of the commissioners for right now? Do we get the six hundred put back into the, for, for budget-wise next year?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah. Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Well, just a minute, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
You know, yes.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, now you can go.
This is Andy, I'm going to inject real quick. Just gonna mention to fellas as if I must, uh, you're not speaking into your mic.
Good point. Me?
That's funny.
It's okay, I was going to point that out. I didn't want to interrupt the whole discussion there.
If you say Mike.
Lane, quarterly report.
Okay, as Mike pointed out before the meeting, uh, my very thick page report was given to you in the packets. Just for review and I guess I will answer any questions.
Looked pretty thorough to me.
Yeah.
But I read through, it looks like you got everything down with your hours and all that, good stuff.
I'm, I'm sure the state will kick it back that need something else.
They're pretty happy with, with, with my reports as compared to other counties, so. April's been a busy month, so, it all, it's not getting any better when you rain.
Yeah.
We're gonna get it, I'm confident. I'll move to approve the quarterly report.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, motion passes.
Questions for me at this point in time before the burn ban treaty?
That's it, we gotta wait fifteen minutes on that.
Thank you.
So easy.
Okay, did everybody get to see the vouchers and payroll?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pay the vouchers.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond. Hammond. You're on mute, I saw your lips moving. Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, motion passes.
I'm assuming he said yes.
Yeah. I lip read a yes there.
Motion to assign eight hundred and ninety thousand to building projects. This one I didn't miss, what, what is this one?
So, this is, now remember I had you guys make the motion to, to use the ARPA money for salaries and wages and then in turn, we were going to take the money that we saved on salaries and wages, put it towards building projects, so.
Okay.
This is just a motion to assign that money.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
We heard you that time, Dave.
Uh, everybody got to see the monthly department reports?
Yeah, I did.
We, we don't need a motion on it.
Okay.
So the, the credit cards, and we're going to discuss that at the next meeting because one of the companies just, just sent me the stuff, so you guys haven't got to see it yet.
Okay.
So this is, we're looking at, um, a couple other institutions that'll provide a business card for the county because we're stuck at a five thousand dollar limit through the credit union and they won't raise it.
Really?
Yeah, so I, Carrie had core trust and I talked to First Dakota and they've both sent proposals now, and I'll send this to Carrie so she can get it to us and you guys can, everybody can look at it then. And then we can decide what to do.
Unfortunately, five thousand's not a good limit either, nor is.
No.
Not really.
I wish it was the case, but.
You know, it looks like, I think they've got perks to them also. I don't care, is there a way to run more of the county business through a credit card? And get the cash back?
Oh, um, I suppose some things we could.
As long as they're not charging us the three percent fee to use it.
Right. We probably could, I mean, I'm sure there's quite a few things we could switch over to that.
Yeah.
Automatic payment.
Yeah.
As long as we're not getting charged.
Just off the top of my head.
Is there a three percent fee on it?
There is on some services, I know. Um, I don't, it all depends on who you're dealing with too, I mean, they, a lot of them are just, that's what it is. Or, I mean, they just, they don't charge anything, but there's places that do charge, so as long as we're not getting charged to use the credit card, you know.
Yeah, well, it's usually paid for the annual, you can avoid part of the fee or something, or pay as you go.
That I don't know.
Usually, you have no interest whatsoever if you pay it full.
Right.
Also, annual is sometimes based on use of the card. If you don't use, if you don't use it, you have to pay. So, I know Wells Fargo is that way.
Yeah, they love fees, but.
Yes, I did notice one of them had an annual fee with it.
Yes.
For how we're likely to use a card, we should be able to find something that limit a twenty K or so at least and, uh, with no fees, it's, that's crazy.
Well, so these, these two proposals I know are going to have like a twenty-five, fifty and a hundred thousand. And then we can set our limit and figure out what we want to, what kind of perks each one has and but that, we'll end up discussing that at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
And Carrie will send out that, uh, that email that I just got.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got some great stories about this sort of stuff, uh, that you, I won't bother you with.
Well, we've got six minutes.
Can you do it fifth?
The really good one, I can, I, uh, I had, I had a, uh, I, I got a solicitation to get a BP card out at, uh, when they switched, uh, to BP out at Coffee Cup. And Coffee Cup helped me fill out the application and it included five percent back on all the fuel that you buy. About four months later, BP, uh, sent me a letter cancelling my card because they determined that, uh, that I was, I was, I was collecting too much gas, uh, back. And I was charging oh, six, seven, eight thousand dollars a, a month just to BP and, uh, they, they objected to that.
I had fifteen thousand built up on a Chevy card at one point and I was going to buy my wife a new car and with it, and went out to Rasmussen's at the time to buy the car. And that's when I found out that I was on a special program with it where I could only use five hundred dollars of it.
Oh, you're kidding?
Because it was all run through my business, I had fifteen thousand racked up on it and they'd only let me use five hundred.
Wow.
Well, you got, you got a lot of supply of cars that you could buy, I guess, at that point.
Well, I, she did not receive a car for her birthday that year.
Fine print.
Yeah. Well, you were feeling pretty good, weren't you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was back when you could buy a car for seventeen thousand dollars and.
My foot, God. Sorry.
On mine, uh, the folks out at Coffee Cup, they're really apologetic about it, they, in fact, they called me saying that you're going to be, you, you, you will be getting this, uh, letter from BP and I said, I already got it yesterday, so. They were pretty helpful in, in setting me with something else up, but, uh, I only got three percent on the replacement, geez.
I think we can start, Lane, the second reading of ordinance twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, authorizing the Clay County Board of Commissioners to declare a fire emergency and prohibit open burning within the county.
Yep, second reading, uh, still not heard, heard anything in favor or a complaint about it, so. Assume that means that everybody's okay with it.
I can barely hear you, Lane.
Yeah, uh, maybe I'll, I'll just talk a lot. Second reading and I have still not received any complaints or concerns or any of that for either. Well, it looks like we got somebody clocking in, so maybe not somebody who wants to speak on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash so seven, isn't it?
Um, I hope I have the right number, that would be appearing.
Yeah.
Okay, authorizing Clay County Board of Commissioners to declare a fire danger emergency and to prohibit open burning within the county.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Now this, and this has just given us the ability to do these things, we're not declaring a burn ban today.
We are not declaring a burn ban today. This is just changing supporting to make sure that we follow the National Weather Service terminology better. Adding a little bit more restriction, uh, not only a red flag, but also a fire weather warn, fire weather watch to be involved and then also that if you're doing a controlled burn to call it in to dispatch prior storm, so everybody's aware of it.
And this doesn't take effect until twenty days after publication of uh, the minutes, correct, Carrie?
Correct, so I believe the publication dates are on your current copy of the ordinance there in your packets. Um, and then it's just twenty days out from there. From the last publication date, from the backside there, Charles.
Okay.
What's the date on that?
Um, May sixth and, or May fifth and sixth and the twelfth and the thirteenth.
So twenty days from the thirteenth.
So.
First of June.
June, something like that.
So it would be.
Oh, yes.
Second of June.
Yeah.
So, yep, it's by June second.
So if somebody does not call it in after that period of time, there is, there.
That's when it starts.
That's when it starts, it may well be, could be fine.
They could be, uh, but it's going to take some public education, make sure everybody knows. With Andy on it, I foresee, I foresee just warnings or.
Right, right.
Call it in and it's not going to take long to spread around in the coffee shops and all of that ones.
Once somebody gets.
Once, once somebody gets talked to about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, this is Andy, I was gonna discuss the fine and fine schedule for what the actual fine would be. I had submitted some, uh, proposals to Lane, uh, Carrie and Alexis, Lane responded, but otherwise I haven't heard any feedback and that was just literally, uh, to start the discussion, so if you want, I can prepare a fine schedule based on that for you folks to approve.
Yeah, that's fine, Andy, I guess, I guess I was under the understanding the judge would levy the fine.
It's not how it works.
Okay. I, yeah, I didn't know how it worked.
Yeah, what we do is, uh, the, the governing body, uh, would establish what their fine is, the court will impose a, uh, court costs on top of that, um, we can, we can mandate everyone to appear in court late on the judge and, um, I, I don't think that's necessary for this, we don't for other, other misdemeanor offenses. And, um, now if we're going to ask for restitution, we might mandate a quarter point or a court appearance. Generally speaking, um, well, Clay County, to my knowledge, only has one other established fine and that's speeding. Uh, other than that, uh, there aren't any established, but Wakanda, Irene, Vermilion, generally municipalities set fines for their municipal ordinance violations. Uh, other than that, there aren't any established, but Wakanda, Irene, Vermillion, generally municipalities set fines for their municipal ordinance violations. And then we provide, you would approve it and then we provide that to the court and then that is what we operate under. So I mean, I made some suggestions on first, second and third offenses and, um, and I can certainly present them. It's, it's not important to do today. Uh, but at some point we'll need to provide that to you.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you. And Alexis is here, June second.
And then Andy's gonna send out a, a schedule of fine. Love or fine level, I guess. So I don't know if Sam is gonna be handling, looking at that for you now. So Andy, make sure you loop in Samantha.
Hello, and, and that'll just be for discussion. I mean, I, I just had some suggestions. Obviously there'll be discussion about that.
Yeah.
Now we'll present it to you.
Okay. Uh, Drew. We have county burial application CW twenty-two dash zero zero five.
Uh, you guys can write up on that. Yeah, any questions?
Looks like normal.
Yeah. Yeah, speak into your mic, Drew.
Sorry, I answered no. Uh, I asked if they got the write-up for it and if they had any questions. I heard it here. Hello?
You're muted.
Oh, Dick's muted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, uh, it's, it's still, still just a kind of a echoey thing that's harder to, pretty hard to understand.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Yeah, I asked them if, um, they'd seen the write-up that Terry had sent and if they had any questions, use pretty straightforward this one.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Musler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, the county burial spots at Bluffview Cemetery.
So I talked to Kelly Posner and there's only one spot left. According to you, one spot left of the original county burial spots. Uh, I don't know if we're in the, the, the applicant for the burial was kind of fifty fifty of whether or not they want to use it. Uh, well, it's just one spot left. I don't know if we want to start discussions with the cemetery of the, the four spots. Uh, right now they're about two hundred dollars a spot and at the end, Julie said they're gonna go to two fifty. But they probably were gonna deal with us. I don't know if some of you guys are interested in.
They don't have to be in Vermillion though, do they?
No.
I think what we should do is find whatever the best deal is. I mean, we've got Fairview, that's an actual cemetery. Now is that, of course, can anybody be buried there?
I don't know about that. If you, if you gotta be, is that considered a Catholic?
Well, that's what I wondered now, but I don't know.
I don't know for sure.
I can ask Keith.
Yeah.
He's on the board.
Is he? That I don't know.
Um, but I, I mean, unless anybody has any objection to that, looking at wherever we, you know, wherever we can get the best deal to, to provide this service.
They're all cremated, correct?
That's my understanding.
When's the last time we used a burial plot?
Well, and that's the other thing, Drew, well, and I don't, I mean, Drew, you could probably explain it better, but it sounds like we have some waiting. They're on a shelf.
Yes, I don't know all the details from Hanson on those. Uh, they kind of made it sound like they wanted to get buried like a year ago, but then I said, hey, spread my thoughts and they didn't. That interest at that point, so.
And what kind of a marker do we have to put up? None?
None, really.
This is Andy. I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we maybe have Drew just swap mics with that one who was right that Lane was using that, the one you're using isn't working? Just hearing you in the background.
Yeah, I think so.
Hear me better now?
That's better, thanks.
Okay, I feel like I'm at a press conference.
I'll bring another one in.
So. It's something we probably should have been offering. I think that's part of, like, state law kind of pushes us to do that. Uh. There's unclaimed, if there's unclaimed bodies still at the funeral homes out there, I think it's something probably should start.
And they're cremated, they're, they're unclaimed urns.
Yeah, they're, they're in a box, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, yeah. But just, there's no bodies.
Yes, yes.
Where are these orange urns stored now?
I think they're at the funeral home from where Hanson said it. I think they're sitting on a shelf behind his desk.
Uh. It's not charging a shelf rent yet.
Yeah. So I, yeah, it's something, and this deal with Bluffview, apparently it's been an issue for several years on and off. It's been, there's been some kind of issue there. Colley didn't really seem to know what it was or seemed really frustrated when the topic got brought up, so. That idea of exploring other cemeteries, that's a good one. Is there, is there one right Wakanda?
Not in Wakanda. There, I mean, they're, they're scattered around the, the country, you know, in the rural part around Wakanda. There's not one in town.
Like, like Lowdy.
Yeah. I would assume they have to be an active cemetery though, that we'd have to use. Cause we have plenty that are, that the historical society is taking, are trying to take care of, or the cemetery board over that.
Is Saint, is Saint, is still active?
Nancy's dead.
What's that, Dick?
Is Saint Peters up by Greenfield still active?
Yes. But is that just a Lutheran one? I don't, these are questions we're gonna have to get answered and see what we can come up with.
I think that's just Lutheran one though.
Okay.
I guess the other question is, is, uh, when you have cremated remains, is there any requirement that they have to make it to a cemetery? Is that, I, I mean, can they be stored in a building or something that, uh, that we even have?
Well, I know.
There are, are there other options that we might explore here?
Well, they're, they're, you know, you can store your personal, you know, a family member. They can stay at your house, but I don't know about if nobody takes them. I think unclaimed, we would have to do something and I'd hate to just put them in a building.
There, I'm sorry, this is Andy, just interrupting with a little information. There is a common plot at Bluffview that the School of Medicine uses um, for donated bodies that they don't return to families. They cremate and they actually have a common plot that they, they put them in there. It's, um, it's in the southeast corner of the cemetery. There could be potentially maybe the county having something like that established.
Yeah, we, uh, my, we put flowers at that, uh, at that spot every year for Memorial Day.
Well, let's, Drew and I'll work on this to see what we have to do. I mean, we'll go talk to the funeral home to begin with. And they'll, they'll let us, they'll be able to tell us what the law is that we have, have to do. And then we'll go from there. If that works.
Sounds good. Can that one spotted Bluffview be used as a common spot for the county possibly?
I guess that would be under Bluffview's rules, whatever they have.
I, I would suggest that we would consider mirroring that, but not using that. They have, they have a marker there for that purpose. And I, I don't think the School of Medicine would wanna do that. It's, they have a specific marker explaining what it's there for.
Okay.
Something like that might be the way to go.
No, I was talking about the one spot left being designated as a county.
I understand, thanks. Yep.
That, that once, that one spot wouldn't be any bigger than that table though. Oh. That you're sitting at. I mean, that would be a burial plot. That's all that's left is a burial plot.
Oh, that's about what they have there for the School of Medicine. It's just a small area. And, and everybody goes in the same spot. I think Dick might be able to explain it better, but they, I think isn't it kind of a essentially, um, I, I want to say, I don't want to say a hole, but a place where they, they inter the remains in the same, in the same spot. And then it's capped.
I think that's, I think that's the case. I, I'm starting to think, you know, it could be that, say we had twice the spot we have now and we had kind of a just had a vault where we could store, uh, individual urns and, and go that way. I wonder if there would be some sort of an option like that that you might talk to the funeral, funeral home about too.
I think Steve wants to weigh in on this.
This is Steve Waller. I used to be in charge of the body donation program at U and the chamber we have is relatively large. Um, Bob Hanson is the one that we coordinate with. So when you visit with Bob Hanson, he can probably tell you all about that particular uh, urn that we have. Ashes go in, they can't come back out once they go in.
Right.
Or just a mixed, it's just a mixed receiver, but it has a relatively large capacity, if I remember correctly. So whoever talks to Bob Hanson, he can probably give you the details of the med school location and how they organized it. How much, how many lots we actually had for it, uh, and everything. We do pay an annual maintenance fee as anybody would at the, at cemetery.
Okay. We lost you, Dick.
Try that again.
There you go.
Uh, thanks Steve for that because I, I thought, I thought I'd remembered that the ashes were mixed in the vault. Uh, for our purposes, I think where we don't necessarily have contact with the families uh, when the cremations occur or afterwards, I wonder if we would really should keep the, the urn separate and, uh, and labeled so that we could retrieve someone's ashes in the future if, if we had someone from a family come forward. I, I think we ought to explore that with the funeral home.
Issue with that is we'd end up having to buy the urns because they're not stored in urns now. I'm gonna call a couple of the other counties and see what they're doing.
We, we receive our donor ashes back from our crematory in a plastic box uh, that can be mailed actually. Um, and they're fairly inexpensive, if I remember correctly, uh, when you buy them in bulk. Again, Bob Hanson would be able to give you those, that information as to our source and, and how it's done. Little bit, uh, smaller than a shoebox, actually.
Yep.
Thanks, Steve.
You bet.
Sounds like a best avenue though is talk to Bob and see what they got going.
See what we can do, yeah.
And you know, there could be something, since he's got him on the shelf, maybe we could have something that says, well, if they're not picked up in a year, they go into the spot. You know?
Yeah.
Put a time limit. So if you, if you don't come and pick them up, then they go in there altogether.
Yeah. I wonder if they wanna be sitting on them that long either.
No, but I mean, or, I, I just threw a year out there. You could even go short of just a time, ninety days, thirty days or whatever.
Was this lady, was she interested in getting the ashes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this one's not an issue then, okay.
Yeah, good. And it, uh, it would seem to me like that mailable plastic box would be something that we could put into, uh, say a, a subterranean concrete vault where you could just take the whole top off and, and retrieve, retrieve, uh, boxes if we needed to. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to think of something that's both practical and, uh, doable and keeps the cost down.
Anything else on the cemetery plots? Okay. We've got a couple of minutes. We gotta, or, cause we're gonna go onto the zoning ordinance next. Or you could give us a zoning update.
Yeah, um, yeah, Monday night we had planning zoning meeting. Uh, first one was the rezone on Peterson's Hemp Grinder up by Wakanda. That'll be coming back for the first read in front of the commission on the thirty-first. Uh, then we went over city for the joint jurisdiction ones. We had Myron's rezone that was asked by the board. That'll become for the county commission on the thirty-first again. And then we have CUP for a cell phone tower out, uh, south of the bypass, um, east side town. And that went through the wrong leader. So that's where I have that and.
Okay, so it's coming before us on the thirty-first and it's going to the city.
On sixteen.
Why are we not having that together?
Will not be with us both times for a joint meeting.
It's in the ordinance.
They disagree.
Would they care? Is this an inconvenience or is there a reason that I got?
Don't know.
I don't know, but it's in the ordinance that anytime we, that an issue is brought to the board, it has to be joint. This is one of my biggest issues with joint jurisdiction and who's making the decisions over there.
They make it first and then we make it second, partially or separately.
Yeah, staff is telling us that we can't do this. Is staff in charge of this or is the council? Cause staff doesn't get to vote. I guess I will make another trip down to City Hall today after this meeting.
So, so who over there said that they would not agree to it? Was it staff? Well, it was discussed in the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, Myron actually brought it up and then Jose informed me that the city will be having their meeting on the sixteenth. And I didn't wanna get into an argument because I'm getting Myron through right now.
Right, exactly, yeah. But if we're not following the ordinance, it doesn't matter what we pass, it's invalid.
Yeah.
I, I mean, if it's, it's written in the ordinance, I mean, Lexi's, you've read it to us.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I wasn't, my focus is on some other things right now, so I'm not even gonna bring it up to start parsing through nuances of things. What I would say is there's reference to the boards meeting jointly. I think there gets to be some conflict over first reading, second reading of things. And then, you know, you have to be together for a public hearing. You know, does that happen at the first reading? Does that happen at the second reading?
Yeah.
You have to be together for a vote. And I guess my question I would throw out there is what is the opposition from a cover our bases and make sure we're all in the same standpoint, um, of just having both together? I don't understand why we would do that. We.
But if we have to be together for the public meeting, they're both public meetings.
Well, and that's kind of, well, public hearing. So like, so.
Well, they're, they're both public hearings.
And that's, and, and that's the deal is that. I mean, from my standpoint, when you don't, if, if you're gonna read in nuance and technicalities into this, uh, while we have to be together for a public hearing. So my question is, are you holding the public hearing on the first reading or the second reading?
We, the, in the past, we've both listened to public input separately.
Cause you're gonna allow commentary on things that are on an agenda on an open meeting. I mean, I, I, I agree with that. I think whether it's a technical public hearing and someone closes things, et cetera. You know, my argument to this is, or not argument, inquiry is, if you do it at the first reading, I mean, the point of entertaining a public hearing is to invite public comment. So you can say, hey, do we wanna change this? Are there any modifications that need to be made? If you then say, you listen to that public comment and say, yeah, actually we can improve upon this and you make some changes, now you gotta read it again. And then you're gonna have to do a second reading of any modifications. If you hold your first reading and you wait till the second reading to hold the public hearing, are you discouraging consideration of public comment? are you discouraging consideration of public comment? Because if the issue is, we all don't want to get together because it's too hard to coordinate too many schedules, and this is a practical thing. And giving the understanding of this is a practical aspect of things, it's too hard to coordinate this many schedules and get us together multiple times. Isn't there some foregone conclusions? So you read it at the first meeting and we have their public comment at that meeting, and you guys have your own meeting, and you have public comments, and nobody really considers the other two, and then you get together. I I mean, I just, are you inviting public comment or not? And if it's inconvenient to get together multiple times, I have concerns about this from a practical standpoint of are you considering public comments?
See, these are issues that would be nice that if they would get back to us on a meeting that we're supposed to be having with them.
And if it's inconvenient to get everybody together for joint jurisdiction, everyone has chosen to be a part of joint jurisdiction. This is what goes with it.
You can't use inconvenience.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that, and it's not fair to the public.
And they're obviously having a quorum, if it's their nightly meeting, or their, one of their monthly meetings.
So they got a meeting scheduled on the sixteenth of May.
That's their plan in zoning.
It's already went through planning and zoning, it's the city council. So, I mean, they have to have a quorum. So the inconvenience thing is not an issue.
Do you guys? I mean, I would throw it out there, I mean, this would be the abundance of courtesy of, could they show up early and have, I I don't know, is there time to publish that? Could you guys all get together on the sixteenth and?
No, not at their.
Okay.
City only has to hit the broadcaster, we've got to get broadcasters, or the plain talk in the drive house.
This is a huge issue.
I would agree with that, and you know, I do think that at some point in time we need to have at least some key individuals get together for a meeting and discuss interpretations of this.
That's what this meeting that we've been trying to set up.
And it's unfortunate it's dragged on for this long, because right now, very transparent with everybody. This has dragged on this long, and until I get through the month of June, this is not on my radar. And I can sit here and and punt this to Samantha, and she can show up for this, but how inefficient for us to get her completely up to speed. It's fine, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. But she will be the one appearing for our office to have this discussion, I just, it's just and if that's what we, if that's what we need to do to get things resolved, that's what we will do. I just can guarantee my availability for the next.
Which is fine, we need to air, we need to, we need to put the issues out there, and it's not a legal issue right now. It's it's operating issues.
Yeah.
That are the biggest issue that that we have to vote on, that.
Operating issues that I think fall back to interpretations of requirements of law. And that's fine, I mean, so I definitely, I think it would be a good idea to have us involved in that. I don't necessarily think this needs to be a full fleshed out public meeting, and that's why I think like you reaching out, say, hey, can we have a sit down of, you know?
But I've requested a full public meeting.
And then that's fine.
Because that's what needs to, the public needs to understand what's going on with their two governments.
There has been a misinterpretation, I think, even of trying to schedule the meeting. So I I find it that, I mean, very transparent then, everybody knows where we stand and what's going on. And I'll try to get, ask Samantha to regroup with Drew and and I'll try to read her on some things, and if it doesn't happen before, you know, if we if we bump into July on that, then.
It's not gonna get resolved in the first meeting. I'm not too concerned about that.
So. Sounds good.
It seems to me like this particular discussion could be it is a discussion, so it could be that the city council would would go with discussing this during one of their noon meetings, which are for discussion purposes only, no decisions to be made. So it might be that posing that as an option may help. The second thing that I wanted to say is that it seems to me like, I think Lexi's right, that actually the first hearing is is where we were still in the formative stage, taking, taking hopefully public comment, and it's probably best for the whole bodies, both bodies to to hear all of the public comments that comes at that point. So if there's only one meeting, that's a joint meeting, it probably should be that first hearing. And I think that Travis is correct, and that we what's really driving this is we could end up with an issue come up sometime where one party or another is really upset with with what the joint group came up with and passed. And then sue us, and that could be a grounds to have the, have our decision overturned at that point. Because we weren't, we didn't follow the letter of the ordinance. The word joint is important there. And either we get rid of the word joint, and I don't think that's the right thing to do. Or come up with means of addressing this in the way we're talking about now. I think Lexi covered a lot of the things we need to think about. I I'd love to have some sort of a written synopsis of that, if 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 you had time to do that, Lexi.
Not right now, Dick, but but I will say, and I appreciate that, because when when you were talking, that dovetailed into my second recollection of that. The importance of the first meeting, right, and the and the public hearing. My recollection is you guys have to be together for the vote, and I think that's why they've aired to the second meeting. But it's the foregone conclusion then, right? If you change anything by that second reading.
You got to start over.
Right, it just feels.
But they can vote to not move it to the second meeting.
Well, that's a good part. I I like the idea, too, of that that noon meeting discussion, if that works for you guys. I mean, that might be a great opportunity to really flesh out some of these things and not take up a whole. But but if you want to suffer, anyway, defer to you guys, I'll see what we can come up with, and maybe that's something, you know, as I read Samantha in on some of this. I I want her to be read in on some of this. Just because I do think it's good, if we can get something resolved, that's good, so.
Excuse me, the noon meeting, I think, may be a good way to introduce, get it started.
But but the the full boards aren't there. And my my personal problem with that is, people are gonna get, that are making decisions are gonna get secondhand information. Stories are getting spun the way the sides want them to be. I want everybody in the same room, so everybody hears the same things and can ask the same questions. That noon meeting, we're gonna get limited to maybe a half hour of discussion, because they have other issues to to deal with, too, at that noon meeting.
Plus, you're right, they don't have everybody there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I forgot that.
Yeah, I do, too.
And I want everybody there, I want everybody on the same page. I mean, this thing either works or it doesn't. That's that's where this needs to head.
And I think we could make it work if everybody gets together and says, okay, this is what we gotta do, follow the rules.
And this is what the rules are.
Right, yeah.
We have different rules for each entity. As it exists right now.
Right.
Well, we interpret them different.
Yeah.
And the, my, I guess my issue with the interpretation is the people interpreting them aren't the decision makers. That's where our roadblock is at, every time I try and request something.
Well, they have legal counsel, too. So, I mean, they they should be able to get an interpretation, I would think. Not saying that that both legal councils are gonna agree, but I mean, there should be some way to find the middle ground there somehow.
Well, and it's not up to the legal counsel, it's it's us to decide how we want to do this. And legal counsel sits there and goes, yeah, there's nothing illegal about what you're trying to do. I mean, we don't want them, they don't need to draft it, unless you've got nothing else to do, Lexi.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
Saying that we need to, that both sides should be able to look at it and say, this is the way it should be. What you got here is is legal or it's not legal. I mean, that's basically what we need.
Do you want, the easiest way to do this is put the commissioners and the city council in a room by themselves. Leave legal and staff out of it.
Well, that could be true.
And say, this is what we need to do. Write it down and then hand it to them and see if, see if we can legally do it.
Right. I don't disagree with that at all, because that makes more sense.
I mean, we are ultimately the decision makers.
I would think that we get smart up people on both sides, we should be able to come to a agreement somehow. You know? I would think. But again, I could wrong people. Okay, so you gotta go over and check it out today?
I'll go ask him again why we're doing this.
Yeah.
So who are you asking?
I'll ask John. And we'll see where that, where that goes. I mean, he he may forward it on to the mayor, and we'll see where that goes. Because if they don't take any public comment, if they take public comment, actually, I should say, they they can't take public comment. Both boards have to hear public comment. And to not take public comment at the first meeting is foolish. Because like Lexi said, how do you decide to change something? Because then you really do waste a lot of time. You get to the second one, you've published for it, and then it's, oh, my God, we gotta change all this.
So you back in square one again.
So you're better off to just be in the room both times. There there's, there's no reason to not be in the room both times. I I I can't understand what I don't have to sit up front with them, but I need to be able to listen to what the public wants. I mean, the the, I think they're gonna claim that's a spacing problem. Because they have a hard time fitting everybody up front.
Sometimes you have to adapt for meetings.
It sounds foolish, but I've had that run by me, so. We're trying to get everybody up there, and we just don't have a lot of space and. Yeah, we'll get it figured out, one way or another.
Yeah.
There's gotta, I mean, we we were spending way too much time on why it's not working. We need to figure something out.
Well, it's definitely broke, so we need to fix it.
Okay. Anything else for the zoning update? Medical marijuana. The zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance I had on the, I had it noticed for Tuesday's meeting, immediately switched. So it'll begin me in front of you guys on the thirty first, that's gonna be a busy meeting. Same time this month, I want to go back through the medical marijuana license. Since this topic already got broke, I was Sam will be able to go through that license after I go through it one more time. All right, go through that, I know we still have the zoning guidelines in there, I gotta pull out. Because if we're gonna have the zoning ordinance, we don't need the zoning guidelines in the license. We already had talked about having one manufacturer cultivation, adding that to the license as well. Any other changes anybody wants to see? If you come up with, if you get a chance, look at it. Or if you want to increase the number of facilities for each class or something like that. Something to keep in mind. I'll have it on the agenda for your tenth meeting, to just kind of run it by, because I know Betty Smith. I want to have some input on that, so.
But going along with that medical, we're also gonna have to update our employee handbook and since marijuana is, and especially if the recreational. And I don't, I mean, that's gonna be a Karen question on the medical marijuana one, what our handbook is gonna be.
So how many have you had so far that are interested?
Four or five interested. One, obviously, John Peterson's one really for sure. One other guy kind of looking, but I think he's struggling to find a spot. He wanted to find a spot in joint jurisdiction. I don't know if that's gonna go anywhere, and a third guy. I know he's definitely gonna do stuff with hemp. I don't know if he can do anything with medical, so. It's, it's so early days, too, I mean, I luckily, we're kind of seeing how it's working out in other counties, so I don't think people are getting inundated as much as they thought they would, so.
Because I think the city's got two that I know of.
Yeah.
I think that's all.
Dispensaries.
Yes.
Are any grow operations in the city?
One.
One, I think.
One. One of the people, one of the groups that are gonna own the dispensary, I believe. Anything else, Drew?
That is all I got.
HVAC project discussion.
Dirty yes.
Do, get rid of that, Mike, yeah, do something with that thing.
All right, well, that, Sam Johnson would be he's been been the contractor here for twenty years for the four hours and for the safety center over here. I must be probably know that, I don't, I'm sure who does, who doesn't. But he's been talking, we've been talking off on about this project. He has some ideas, thoughts, and concerns, and so I just invited him to here to just kind of hear what he has to say. Might be good, obviously, will be good advice for everybody here while we're making this decision-making process, so we just make the best decision
So I've been taking care of this building for roughly twenty years, been in the business for twenty four years. Our company's done the National Music Museum Preservation Center. We take care of the library in town and several other buildings. What you guys are doing as far as an HVAC stance, I think is you know, it's great that you guys are moving forward with it. What I just, as far as advising you guys go, I just don't want to see you guys do something proprietary. Okay, that's the mistakes that I've seen in the past, is where you'll hook yourself to a company, okay, that is the sole proprietary, nobody else can work on it, right? You kind of get stuck with them, I guess, for lack of better terms. Scott, you've seen that in the past, and some of the jobs you've had in the past where you know, you can't get them to come, or the price is twice what somebody else's is. I guess, in a nutshell, kind of what I would advise is the four pipe system, I have the chill water. Meaning that a lot of different people can work on that. The VRF system that you guys were looking at, that's that's an example of the proprietary, okay? There's only gonna be one company that can come down, you know, and hook up and and work on that. So you would be stuck, for lack of better terms, for somebody to come down from two falls anytime you had an issue. That that's, that's one of the issues with the VRF system. I mean, there's obviously some advantages to it, too. It's, you can keep it hidden, it's quiet, sufficient, the upfront cost is is pretty high, though. So as far as the, you know, the the heating and cooling, I would go with the four pipe system as far as delivery. I would look at the new fan coil units for each room. Obviously, you'd have to upgrade them, because you you wouldn't just add another coil to these existing units. Um, definitely new boilers. That's something financially you guys could probably pay for itself in about three years. And that is putting in the new high efficiency boilers and making sure that we have drives on all the pumps. As far as getting fresh air to the building, that's another piece of equipment that can be very proprietary, okay, so when it goes out for bid. If if it's specs saying this is what we're bidding on, it could be very proprietary. If it's spec as this or similar, that opens it up, you know, to to other other options that are gonna be like that, so that's something to keep in mind. Another thing to keep in mind is passive breaking it down and doing it in stages. There's a lot of financial advantages to doing things in stages. I worked at Al Eber, Dakota Valley Schools, when they built that new school, you know, they broke down. They built it all at once, but they had bid it in stages, and that saved him, I want to say like twenty percent in the long run, doing it that way. It was, I don't know if any of you guys know Al Eber or not, but
How how did that save them money?
Because when you break things down into smaller sections, it's when you bid on something, okay, a big project like this. When you bid on something, okay, a big project like this. The owner of the company or whoever's been in the company or bidding for the company, they generally have to throw a lot of, uh, slough at it. We don't know for sure how much time it's gonna take to drill these holes and so on and so forth. You understand what I'm saying? There's a, there's a lot of, uh, of wiggle room in there because of that. When you break it down, let's say we did the boilers, I might say you have to do it in a different year. But we're gonna bid the boilers here, we're gonna bid, you know, the, uh. Four fan coil units and and four pipe system here. Uh, the dedicated outdoor air system or DOES, uh, that that would be on the roof, that's what, that's what's bringing in your fresh air. You know, we're gonna bid that separately as well. There's a lot of advantages to doing it that way, financially. So again, I'm not, I'm not, um. I'm just giving you guys my opinion on it. I'm not trying to point you in one direction or the other, but that's twenty four years and seeing different things. I think these are things that are really gonna suit you guys well, it's gonna save you money and, uh. In upfront money and in long, in the long run, so.
See, I would have never guessed that, the stage, I would have thought somebody would come in and say, okay, if I could do the whole thing, I could get you this price.
Yeah, but given the atmosphere of how things prices have changed in the last year, you know, that could also come back and bite you, but. I'm not, again, I'm not saying you have to do it. Um, boilers this year, fan coils next year, and so on and so forth, but.
Yes.
How much are you spending on writing up the new, the separate bits? You're having an, I'm assuming we're having an.
He's still gonna write it all up. He'll just be like, okay, we're gonna do this and break it off. It's still gonna be the same amount of writing. It's just different.
Well, maybe saving over here, but are we?
That's that's something you'd have to talk to the architect on. Or whoever's gonna bid it for us, be like, okay, you're you're doing the same job, you're not gonna charge us extra because we're. Doing it in four stages.
That's just to be aware that there could be some costs.
And when it comes to controls, um, as far as building automation, the A S system, you know, management systems, I'm called the MS. That's another thing that I think, um. Just be open about how you guys are gonna be able to handle that. This is something you're gonna be able to, um, you know. Manage maybe from a computer, or is it something you're gonna be comfortable with, you know, as far as the, uh. The fan coil unit controls, the boiler controls, and so on and so forth. In my experience, I've seen, you know, the boiler controls, um. Chiller controls and so on, generally. If, say for instance, Scott, cause he's gonna be here, um, if he can have the most control over that, it's better. Okay, if he's gotta get in and try to figure out a digital control system. It can be very overwhelming, right? Um, that boiler, these these companies now, these high pit, you know, high efficiency boilers, I don't care if it's lock and bar or. Uh, you name, there's there's five other companies, they're gonna name, they've done enough, um, R and B that. The temperatures of the water they're putting out goes off to reset schedule, so the colder it is outside, you know, the warmer water it's gonna be. Um, in my experience, you're better left to not just letting those boilers run the way they're designed. Than trying to have a building management system come in and take over the top. It's it's what they call over control. You know, so having controls on the the units so that you can have all of that on one laptop, I think that's a great idea. And you can see it, but, um, I I just think you should be aware of being a control as well. Just things to be aware of.
So if they get it, you'd be saying that they would be handling all that? Is that what you're saying here, instead of us handling the the controls here?
It's just possible. Um, you can get tied in with the company.
Yeah.
And it it just.
It can be.
Pretty soon you're so far in.
So I think what Mike's question is, who's in charge of the over control? Who who's who's doing that?
Well, I just think when when you guys decide on the design, it's something that maybe we should get back together with, and I can. I can go through it with you and be like, well, that's good, but.
Right.
Or that's good. You know, because of this, and just give you the different advantages and disadvantages.
Cause I've had some experience that we had when I was at the post office, we had put in a new boiler system and they. We in the old one, we had control of it like there.
And you like that?
Yes.
See, and that's.
Somewhere else, it was a pain.
Yeah, cause they control the temperature?
Not only that, but even in this, even in this particular system here.
Yeah.
Almost every single season, meaning, you know, fall, spring, right? I've gotta come down and talk, actually, I've got, uh, a chat train, they'll just call me. How do I do that again? And he'll get on the computer as far as switching it off, and it's not supposed to be that way, okay? It's supposed to be automatic. That's the way it was sold.
Over there.
But I gotta get down, you know, I've I've gotta, he just gets on the phone now and I call him, he's, yeah, drive down here. Show him how to do it, you know, but like I said, it can be overwhelming, right? Scott, I mean, if you don't, if you don't see it every single day, you just have to understand.
Like anything else?
He doesn't know, yeah, yeah, he took some time, you know, we sat down one. Yeah. We sat down, you know, one day for an hour and a half and kinda went through it, but, um. Those are just things I want you guys to be aware of going forward, right? But things can get very expensive. Um, I'm just, for instance, you know, the the outdoor air system. Depending on how they wanna go about it. I mean, realistically, guys, we're just talking about getting fresh air in the building, right? You know, we don't need to spend two hundred thousand dollars. But that's all I'm saying, there's different ways of going about it.
So the new four pipe system.
I like that.
We wouldn't have to switch back and forth, it would be automatic, right? I mean, if the day got to be ninety degrees.
Yeah, your your fan coil, let's say I have a thermostat in here, you know, a sensor generally, you know, put them kind of a door or whatever. That sensor's gonna tell you what is gonna say, we got a set point of seventy, right, a dead band of two degrees, so might be up to seventy two, down to sixty eight. Right, so at sixty eight, we're gonna start heating up. At seventy two, we're gonna start cooling down. Now, the reason we need that dead band is we can't fight it, alright? Look at everything on a graph. We want it to go like this, we don't want heat, cool, heat, cool, it's just too expensive. So that dead ban, there's just something every system's got, but you know where it is, it just is that way, so.
But that but that'll switch automatically.
That's correct.
Nobody's gotta switch it over.
Yeah, so, and that's what I'm saying, a lot of the stuff. A lot of it, you don't really need, okay, you don't really need a lot of it, it's it's just kind of bells and whistles, okay? If you've got that sensor that can tell you or the thermostat that can tell you, you know, an automatic one, a honeywell thermostat, for instance, we'll put on there. The chiller is going to turn on when the outdoor temperature is. Say the outdoor temperature gets up to fifty five, okay? I know that sounds like still cold outside, it is. But the third floor, I think Kerry can attest to this, heat rises, right, colder drops. So the second and third floor, even let that fan close off right now, we're still pumping the way these systems are designed. We're still pumping hot water through that coil, so just through convection, especially. Especially just because that boiler, you know, it has to be, it's 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 a, how do I say, it's a low efficient boiler, so it has to be a much warmer water. We can't, we can't afford to have our return water below a hundred and forty degrees. Well, convection happens at a hundred and forty degrees, so if we can't have our return water below a hundred and forty. The supply water going through, that's generally a hundred and sixty, even if it's off. So you're naturally just getting this convection, and that's why people on the third, you know, second and third floor are getting so warm, even when it's off. The pumps are still running. So. Again, going back to my advice as far as doing it in stages, if we did that boiler. Say for instance, that was our first stage, right? The goal is when you have a boiler, say it's stamped at ninety five or ninety percent efficiency, right? That's federally regulated. That that is what it can be the best. We can only achieve that efficiency if our return water is below a hundred and thirty eight point six. We just call it a hundred and forty, right, in the industry, so if we're below a hundred and forty, then we're going to, uh, kinda say, alright? Now, that being said, if we can keep all of that water cooler. Now, we're not gonna have that convection anymore. You'll still have heat because the fans forcing it, if they need heat on the first floor. The fan will turn on and it'll still, you know, say it's a hundred and ten, maybe even a hundred degrees coming through that coil, you're still gonna warm up that room. But you're not gonna have that nat- natural convection, alright? You understand what I'm saying?
So it won't room, it won't.
It won't raise up, no, and that, there's there's a lot of advantages. You know, to just doing things again, going back to going in stages, but I could probably sit here and talk all day about it and I, you know. There's also advantages to having things done too. I just don't wanna see you guys spend money that's.
So if we do, which one of the things would you do first? Would you do the?
Boilers, I would have done the boilers.
You did the boil.
Yeah, see, I talked to Andy a lot of the time about this, because before Scott started, he was kind of my point of thought, and, um. You know, we really wanted to do the boilers, I wanna say five years ago. I mean, it was kind of the point of, hey. You know, we're in need, the pumps are starting to, everything was kind of starting to, you know, go and. At that point, he thought maybe we're gonna get it in jail, maybe we're gonna get in a courthouse, you know, so everything was kind of just. Hey, can you just keep it working? Just tweak it, you know, Band-Aids and duct tape, you know, get it working. And, uh, and that's kind of the way we were. Well, now that we know, we're not getting that courthouse, right? Now we're not, maybe not getting the jail, um. Now, I think it's the point, let's put those boilers in, let's take advantage of that right away, and and I get, the payback's gonna be, like I said, it's gonna be quick. Um, and the comfort level right away could be quick, um, upstairs. I'm not saying don't do the four pipe system, I still am on board with four pipe system. But just depends on how financially, how you guys wanna do it. If you wanna take out that big chunk of money and do it right away. Still, you can bid it in stages, okay, cause that's gonna save you money, um. If you want to do the boilers and, um. I would still, I would still advise doing some, you know, the fresh air system. Everybody needs that.
Yeah.
You know.
So will two boilers handle the courthouse and the safety centers?
Yep, yep, and there might be, there might be, I'm not gonna put a pencil to it, guys, cause I haven't really, um. Done it yet, but there there might be advantages to doing like three boilers, three or four boilers, um, in conjunction. Have to understand. The way the high efficiency boilers work, you want them to come on in the morning and just run like hum all day long. On low speed, right? It's like going fifty five, um, versus going eighty five, right? Or driving, driving down the road, if we can just, just hum all day long, that's when we're getting our peak efficiency. Yeah, it's running all day, there's smoke coming out the chimney, but, uh, it's way more efficient than start, stop, start, stop, start, stop, and that's what we're doing right now.
And these new boilers will get rid of the chimney?
That, are you talking about the chimney that's falling apart over here?
Yeah.
That was another thing that we kind of addressed, but it was.
But.
You know what I mean? We don't know what we're gonna do, type of.
Will that get rid of that?
We could, yes, yep.
That'd be a plus.
Yes, absolutely.
It's coming down one way or another.
Yeah, I mean.
Whether we do it or.
You do it or the other wind doesn't, and with these impact winds, you can have them.
And those in the safety center have to stand alone in case of some kind of emergency. So we have to have, we have to fall back on it.
I wouldn't advise getting rid of that, I mean, that, oh, that would have the chimney too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but why can't we just get a generator and run off a generator?
So I, I don't know.
Right, but if you have an outside generator.
Oh, I see what you're saying, just tie that into the other boilers, yeah, that would be, oh, so, yeah, you would still have the boiler, it just wouldn't matter if it's that one or this one. Are you talking about working off of, uh?
I don't know.
Are you talking about working off of, uh, oil?
Yeah, I think Andy touched on that better than I can, I'm sorry.
That I don't know, that would be on, that'd be the question.
But I think all we need's a backup, and if we just put the backup on these new boilers. And tied everything together.
But I think that, maybe you correct, I'm wrong, if there's a, had some kind of natural disaster where you're.
I just wanna interrupt and ask Scott to reach over and grab that mic that's too down from you. The mic you're using doesn't work.
We have.
No one does either?
No.
This one here?
Yeah.
Oh, if I'm not mistaken, right, you get a. Over there in the safety center, you guys have to have the capabilities of fuel oil, right? In case there's some kind of disaster where the flow of natural gas is interrupted.
That is the intent, yeah, our building's supposed to be, uh, self-contained, we have, uh, our boiler. And our gen, well, our generator runs on fuel oil, the boiler can run either way.
Okay.
So the boiler, you would wanna stay then, Andy, because of that?
Well, you know, we haven't had an issue in thirty years, I I don't know if that's still an an argument to be made. Fire departments run, their their generator runs on natural gas.
But even if it didn't run on natural gas, just say it ran on diesel.
Yeah.
And it was just an outside one, you know, with these new jet, new boilers with a new generator for a backup.
I I wonder, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering if they're talking about having the natural gas shut down.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if the natural gas shut down, wouldn't the generator, oh, you're talking for the fuel to them?
Your fuel source.
I've never ran into, I mean, again, all the schools used to have fuel for backup too. Again, this would be a question that I would have for you guys, cause I don't know the stipulations as far as safety center goes, but. Um, I in in my lifetime, I'm only forty five years old, but I've never seen natural gas ever shut down.
So at the schools, at the school level, at the s- the school level, the reason they had that option. Is because they were sold, they were sold natural gas at a lower rate per therm. If they had the capability, if the gas company would call you and say.
Interrupted, that's right.
We're interrupting you, you gotta go to fuel oil, you got a better rate, that's what the schools did.
And regarding our generator, we do need to have a generator for our PSAP, um, we wanna have it, it's important. Um, I don't see a a great value in bringing in a different generator than this one, it functions very well. Uh, we we test it, we maintain it, and, uh, it's wired into our building, you know, very well with the cut over. I I really don't see any point now to change it. If if we do get a new building, then, you know, somebody else will have it to use or not. But if we don't, it will be, uh, it's a good generator, I don't see any point changing. And I I hear that you guys were talking about the chimney, but I couldn't hear what Scott was saying, so I don't know if that's what brought this up or not.
But is that, is that generator big enough to run two or three new boilers?
The generator doesn't run the boilers.
No, we're talking if it had to. If electricity went down.
Okay.
It should, um, it's a hundred and twenty five KW.
Absolutely would.
Okay.
So, no, Andy, I think the confusion was, cause you couldn't hear Scott, um. He thought that we had to have fuel as a backup source for the safety center.
Fuel oil. No, I think that that was the intent when this building was built, that, uh, that we would need that, but you're right, Sam. And and in these thirty years, our natural gas has never been interrupted. Um, again, the fire station, even their generator runs on natural gas, cause I mean, there's a lot of trust placed in the natural gas supply. Um, and so you're talking about for the boiler.
Correct, yeah, we would, we wanna take that chimney down.
Right, yeah, yeah, that would be great. I I don't see any reason that our boiler needs to run on fuel oil as well. I mean, yeah, if the natural gas was interrupted in the winter, we would get cold like everybody else would get cold, so I I don't. I don't know that that's a real problem that we need to concern ourselves with at thirty years into the into the life of this building.
So we could just get rid of that boiler, then really, I mean, obviously, it's not gonna have a chimney, we can't run it on natural gas either. So, yeah, we can get rid of that boiler and run, you know, the whole system off the high efficiency boilers.
And then we wouldn't need the chimney.
I'm still gonna need the generator, right?
Has its own chimney.
Yep.
Yeah, the generator goes out, um. Yeah.
If you look at it when you go outside, there's two chimneys, there's the big, large one that looks decrepit, and then there's a smaller one that runs parallel to it. And that's the generators, essentially the tailpipe.
I guess this whole conversation came up, cause we wanna get rid of the chimney.
And we can, I mean, that's what we decided is that it's not. To get rid of it, I was unaware of the safety, you know.
The generator's chimney is fine, I think, it it is, it's looks, it looks solid, it'll still run up there. I don't know what else we'll do, but it it isn't about to collapse like I think that the boiler's chimney is.
No, the generator goes right through the, um, the tunnels beside the, uh, refrigeration lines, Andy, it goes out the sidewalk.
Nope, nope, it goes parallel to the chimney, you can look at it out there, it it runs right up next to it. All the way to the third floor of the courthouse. And when it's running, you'll see the cap open and you'll hear the, you'll hear the tailpipe, just like.
Uh, you're you're right, it does run out those, it gets from the basement out through that tunnel. It, it doesn't go up where the boiler does, it may run out.
I'll be happily to bet you guys on that one. I'd be happily to bet you guys on that one. I, I dare, I challenge you to prove me wrong. No, it runs, it runs outside the courthouse, parallel to the chimney, all the way to above the third floor.
It, it does, but to get out of the basement, it goes through the cooling tunnel.
No, it doesn't.
I'll hold the money. It, it doesn't matter right now.
That's fine. I, we'll be okay, but I mean, ultimately, I guess the question was brought up as far as uh, you know, being able to take down the old chimney, Andy, is uh, is answered now. So, we can take that one down, um. Anyway, I didn't want to take up a ton of your guys' time. I just wanted to give you guys my advice, again, I've done it, and some of the stuff that we take care of, it's. It's uh, it just doesn't have to be that over control. It doesn't have to be that expensive, expensive upfront cost, okay? Ultimately, all we're doing is what they did two hundred years ago. We're taking heat from a box and we're dispersing it, okay? It, it's not rocket science what we're doing, and it doesn't have to be terribly expensive, and it can still be comfortable, you know, for all doing all those things, so.
Scott, do you want to get in touch with the architect then and?
I will, I, yeah, he's waiting to hear back from me, so schedule another meeting with, with the Sam if he's available and Marty. So, uh, yeah, he did send me uh, late last week, revised plan to include this four pipe system, a price with that, so, yep, and uh, so I need to reach back to him and meet with him again, and then after that, he wants to meet with the commissioners. So I'll get that rolling.
Is everybody okay with, you know, four pipe system? Get the boil, get whatever number boilers we need to make the most efficient and?
Yeah.
You know, I think Sam's talking, you know, when you, look right now, we got two boilers and Sam's saying, well, three, maybe four. That, I don't know if everybody quite understands that these boilers come on in stages, depending on what your, what your demand is.
Yeah, it's called cascade system, so the reason I said maybe four is sometimes, sometimes more to do four small ones than two big ones. Alright, you're still, and of course, there's more advantages there too as well, because you've got redundancy. So one, one boiler saying, you know, it's down for some reason ten years from now, you still got to have the three, granted your redundancy too as well.
Right. But if it's the most efficient way to do it, I mean, if it, financially.
Yeah, I guess that I, it's just cringe every time I come in here and seeing that big old, you know, chimney and that thing kick on, you're just, all that dollar bills is going right out the chimney and just, but again, we kind of thought. Yeah, we're gonna move forward into a different building, so there was nothing really done, I think, for probably the last five years or so. When you say, Andy, when we start talking about that?
At least five years.
At least, yeah, Sam, as long as uh, well, when, before Johnson Heating and Cooling existed, you and I have been talking about this. I remember you talking about the percent efficiency you can improve on us back when you were with uh Johnson Controls.
Yeah.
Been a long time.
The payback is, it's just uh, it's, it's crazy not to do. It's kind of like uh LED lights, you know, you just, it's crazy not to.
Well, I'd be real curious to see if, you know, if you started a boiler, see what, how much it changed in this place. You know, how much people thought that they.
Now that being said, there's, there's, there's certain things that also need to be done. Um, that system that's over the courthouse right now, that's very old, you know. I don't, I can put something together if you guys like.
Then, is there another point Sam made too about um, definitely you need to replace the fan coil units, cause you need to get some control technology going where you're stopping that flow of water through that coil. And then you guys talked to something about, you know, on them shoulder seasons that you stop the flow of the water, and there's something about that um, chiller's kind of comes on in stages or something.
Correct, yeah.
So.
Yeah, which again, it takes care of itself, so there's not a lot of additional controls you need to purchase, you know, from a control company. They, they can get quite expensive. So, that's something to think of as well, moving forward is, when you do have the bidding or bids, or if you talk with the engineering artists, maybe have the controls broke down, how much of those costing us alone, you know?
I mean, you guys are experts.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, that if they're costing you, you know, like, I can look at it for you, an estimate, and I go, well. You can do that, what they're doing, you know, with the technology that's on the shelf over here, so. It's just something.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, but that's what, you know, that's why we have you.
Yeah.
Because, because that's the only point that we.
Like I said, the National Music Museum uh Preservation Center, uh, I work with an engineer that I've previously, both of us worked at Johnson Controls for twenty years. He's, he's been in the business for thirty years, but we talk all the time and that system's got to stay within two percent. I mean, you have, you understand, there's priceless artifacts, so it's got to stay within two percent of humidity.
Don't want to crack the violin.
Yeah, yeah, so that was pretty precise, you know, on, on where we ended up on that particular building.
So in the effort of saving time, is it better to have Scott and Sam and, is Marty still helping?
Yeah.
Have those three work with the, the engineer, and then just report back to us going, this is the best system.
Yeah, cause I have.
Yeah, cause, yeah, I.
It's out of our will.
Yeah, and I apologize for the last time I came to the meeting, I really didn't know where the foothold was on everything. And then when I heard you guys had already agreed on a, on a BRF system, I go, whoa, whoa, whoa. They're nice, they're very, very nice, but I mean, for the price that you're putting that in, you could pretty much put a geothermal system in, which is more efficient and less of a cost.
And why haven't we looked at that?
You know, I mean, just because there's so many options out there, it's kind of like a kid in a candy store, you know, you.
But I think what Phyllis is asking, is that the better option?
The G uh.
Geothermal.
I would have to put a pencil to it now. You know, everything has changed so much, I can't shoot from the hip anymore.
It's just. Dick is more involved with those also.
Yeah, but I mean, that's maybe something, but I think put it those guys' core.
So is it, do we send it back to them with uh, get us the best system?
Okay.
Is that?
I agree with that all the way.
The best of both these scenarios.
I mean.
Let's, we can look at it. Also look at the future of environment and how these, you know, the geothermals, my understanding is better for many reasons.
Not to make it difficult, but I have to look at the geothermal and the four pipe system, just so we have a cost comparison.
Yeah, the four pipe system's gonna be more of it, okay? That, that, that's the one, the four pipe system, you know, I'm not gonna.
But I mean, if it's.
Until I'm not gonna speculate.
But if it's within a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Then you can go, okay, if we went geothermal, we're gonna be, we're gonna be ahead in five years. You know, that, cost wise, you know, if we're saving more money geothermal five years down the road, we're better off doing that than putting in a four pipe system. But that's, I think we should look at both, just so we have a cost comparison.
I can do that. We have to help.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be in contact.
Is everybody okay if we take a five minute recess? Yeah, we're back in session. Uh, Rod, you're on, right? Brad, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, we've got the awarding, the micro-surfacing bid.
Yep, so that's just a straightforward, um, kind of a, you know, paperwork deal. Um, the, if bids were a little higher than last year, but everything has went up and, and um, I guess I, it was, you know, under my estimate, I recommend we, or within reason, I recommend we award.
So Rod, are you on? And the only question, no, I just have a question for Rod if he's Brad, that uh.
Maybe I can answer it.
For his budget, if he's got it in there.
Okay, okay. Um, and we were, uh, one, one heads up too, we were looking at um, um, uh, the, the county line road with Yankton County, which is adding some miles there, and then splitting the cost of that route with Yankton County. But that, that'll be a separate side deal between, you know, Clay and Yankton County.
Okay.
But, but I'll, I'll get the paperwork, after we get this all done, I'll, I'll get the paperwork done for that.
Okay. Rod, are you on yet?
Let me, let me text him. Cause he was, I wonder if he's not having some issues, cause he uh, was texting me.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
What's that?
Aztec is the one we've used the last.
Quite a bit cheaper.
Yes.
Well, the only reason I'm asking Rod is, you know, two years ago, when the prices were so much cheaper, we did more.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure he's got it in his budget and.
See if he comes back, cause I know that we're gonna, you know, he was waiting kind of to see what the costs were and who won, whether or not we'd add that.
Yeah, he's trying to get his mic to work and it's not.
Okay, I just texted him, maybe if he can tell me what to say, and I'll tell you.
Yeah, he's, he said his mic's not working for some reason.
There's the chat function too, if he wanted to use that.
Or if he just reconnect, I don't know.
The last time was my mic not working, it was, we plugged in another system.
Do you hear me now?
Yes. So, so my questions Rod were, if you've got, this one was one point three million.
Correct.
Yeah, one point three in your budget, or if we need to cut it back some.
No, no, we haven't, we were, um, as Brad said about the county line, um, the nine miles of the county line with Yankton, we had originally, I've had six hundred thousand in the budget to uh, do a thin overlay, and after we met with LTAP and Brad, we decided that we can do uh, microservice on that also, and so I have, I have the money in the budget.
Okay.
That's about as far as I can, as we can go though.
So we could do what you got here, plus, plus the, that between the Yankton and Clay County.
Right, and I, I misspoke, it's only eight miles, um, we're not microservicing down through the slough. They recommend South Irene to the base of the first hill just north of two ninety-nine where we should start. Just because the road's unstable through the slough, and we're just, we're gonna work on that with Yankton County and do a little chip sealing, patching and chip sealing to take care of that, but, but yes, I have the money in the budget.
That's a good thing.
I believe I had uh, I had one million six hundred and sixty-six thousand devoted to it, so.
Okay.
Add that six hundred thousand I had for the Yankton County, we should be good. I should say we are good.
And you're fine with Aztec?
Yes, been very happy with them the last three years.
I'll make a motion to accept a little bit of Aztec.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes.
Um, Kerry, this is Brad, so there's a, that, that form there that, for signature, if you just scan that to me, um, um, after, after you get it back, and I'll take care of it, let's get it to the contractor and we'll get the contracts going.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, anything else for me?
Nope, not right now. How's the Clay Creek coming?
Well, we, we haven't flown it yet, we're, we were having a hard time getting a, a, a couple days in a row that uh, the wind wasn't, was within limits to fly our drone.
Okay.
Oh, come on, it wasn't blowing that hard.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna sign off.
Okay, uh, we've got a right away application for Heine Electric on University Road.
Yeah, I recommend you approve it.
Uh, I'll uh, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Right away application for Clay Union Electric on three hundred and thirteenth street.
I also recommend you that, that you approve it.
I'll move to approve the right away for Clay Union Electric.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Fuel quotes for number two diesel and gas.
Move to approve Jerry's service uh, for the diesel quotes at three point six five eight.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. And then for the gas?
Was the gas in it?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the gas quotes for Jerry's service at three dollars point thirty-four cents.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second and further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Striping agreement with the state.
Yeah, this is, this is something we do every year, um, unfortunately gets less and less every year with the state helps us out with, uh, but it will be a little less than this, quite a bit less than this, because I just informed them the other day that the striping was included in the microservicing this year. Because last year, nobody had any paint and we couldn't get nothing striped till almost December. So it should be less than this, um, Brad was, and I were gonna figure out what that was, but we didn't have time to get it done before this meeting, but they said to go ahead and uh, sign the contract, and if it's less, it's better. If it's more, then we gotta come back and do another one, but it'll be less than this. And I had ninety, I had ninety thousand in my budget for striping, and of course, like everything else, everything went way up since the last June.
So, the county shares, according to this, a hundred and one?
Yep.
Correct.
Kind of fuzzy.
Hundred and one thousand one ninety-six eighty-five is our share of the hundred and twenty-two thousand nine fifty-eight.
But you think we're gonna be a little less than that?
Yeah, I'll be, I would say quite a bit less, I can't tell you.
Okay, that's fine.
At this time, but some of that striping is in our microserver budget too, so.
Okay.
Get it done a little sooner this way.
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Transportation Alternatives Funding Letter.
Now, we, we receive this. Every year also. I did check with. Steve Graham from DOT and Will Kern. From Alteg that are in charge of our master transportation plan. Uh, to see if any of this money could. You know, be used. You know, like on bike trails or um, walking trails, which it can be, but. We can't apply for any of the funding until we get our master transportation plan. Turned into the, and the state approves it. So it's something in the future. You know, we don't, once we get that approved. This money may still be there or next year will, there'll be another allocation, so it is something we can. Use, I just wanted you to be aware of it, that there's some other funding out. To help us with the stuff other than the roads on our master transportation plan.
Anybody have anything else for that? No, we don't have to do anything with that, right, Rod, right now?
No, not right now, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, discussion regarding future use of plastic pipes for county roads. Are you talking whether boring or?
No, um. Our use. You know, up there by Bethel Hall, the Volin Road, we put a couple of. Uh, plastic pipe with stainless steel. You know, plastic on either side of the stainless steel core. Which is quite expensive. But I, at our meeting in Deadwood, there's a company called ADS. And they have this corrugated. Double wall. Plastic pipe, very rigid, you can. Put it in like I priced a sixty incher with twenty-five foot of fill. And it'll stand up to that. The good thing about it is it's easy to put together. It snaps together like a sewer line. Once a rubber gasket goes inside the other one, it can't be pulled back out and then there's a. Uh, for lack of a better word, a band. Like the, a fiber band that goes around it with metal to tighten it up, to seal that. And. Then it also has a smooth inside. So we actually have the corrugated outside, but then. You know, like we were talking here last couple of years about replacing a concrete pipe with a steel pipe and we had to. Move up. To the next size, larger metal pipe to compensate for the smooth. Concrete where this, we could put the same. Pipe in there. And I just. McCook County has got quite a few already, Union County actually bid it. This year. And unfortunately. Right now on that west end of three hundred and sixth street. We have a sixty inch pipe that's collapsing. The bottom's rusted out of it, it can't, we can't put a liner in it. And. For a sixty inch culvert, it's a hundred and seventy-five, twenty-six a foot. And for a sixty inch metal pipe, it's a hundred and seventy-five. And ten cents, so we're talking. Sixteen cents a foot more. But it's. A lot easier to install because it is plastic. And we'd have to have a band with a metal one and then I have to pay. Uh, oversized for the. Trucks to bring just two pieces, because we need a hundred and sixty foot of pipe. Because it's twenty-three foot deep. And just wondered what your guys' thoughts were of. Trying something, we have that spot and the pipe up by Saint Peter's Church. On uh, Greenfield, it's a little spur there on one of them curb roads. You might remember blew it out there and flooded nineteen. And we reset it and. I'd like to try it in both the places if you guys. Don't have an issue with it. The only thing we don't allow is plastic pipe in a driveway. And we might have to look at revising that because that was meant for the. Stuff they used to buy at Campbell Supply. That real flimsy stuff and then the. Water would come and float the ends up and plug the pipe or somebody burned the road ditch. And it, you know, melted. Then they have to dig it up and do it again where. This plastic pipe, it could withstand. Somebody burned the road ditch and. They use it for storm drains. And everything, so. I'd like to give it a shot, seeing how it's cost. About the same, but Brad was figuring out what it costs to put the. Pipe in there is gonna be substantial savings to somebody being able to just. Lower that twenty-two foot piece of plastic pipe instead of a eighty foot. Metal pipe, you know?
Yeah, I'm. Might as well try it.
Yeah.
We'll never know if we don't.
Yeah, I think this stuff was displayed up at the road conference last, was that last fall that we were up in Sioux Falls for that? Road camp conference, Rod?
Yep, it was.
What, what's type of plastic is that? It. That it would be. How, how's it fireproof, I guess? It. It's black.
I mean, it's not completely fireproof, if you threw, threw it in a burning barrel, it'd burn up, but if somebody's burning the road ditch. You know, and that doesn't burn very long, it won't shrivel up like that.
Yeah, it's.
Tile.
Yeah, it's ABS, isn't it? It's a. Isn't that the type of plastic it is, which would be a little more?
Yeah, actually the. And you may more, know more about this than me, but it's. What is actually classified is an N twelve. ST dual wall. HDPE ASHTO. M two ninety-four. And the ASHTO means it meets ASHTO recommendations. For road use and we follow ASHTO. Guidelines for a lot of stuff in the road. I would say building or maintenance, whatever.
Okay, yeah, it's not an ABS then, it's HDPE, that's what that other.
Okay, that's.
It's high density polyethylene.
There you go. They told me that, but I didn't write it down, so. But if you guys don't think that's a problem, I'd like to give it a shot.
Give it a whirl and we might wanna think about that for driveways then too.
Correct, that's what I was thinking.
That.
It's pretty, pretty close to the metal pipe plus. You know, I will see what plastic I'm sure will go up to compared to that, but. It's within dollars all the way down to the eighteen inch. I think eighteen inch. Eight, for like a driveway is like. Seven dollars cheaper than a steel.
Yeah, having that smooth interior and the corrugation for strength is, that's kind of a big deal, I can see where that could really be. Real helpful.
And plus you don't get the vibration of the water going through there. Disturbing the bed it's setting on, so.
Okay, sounds like. We're all in agreement that you can try it, Rod.
All right, thank you.
Uh, request for gravel for rodeo grounds.
Yeah. I know we talked about this. A few years back, but I, I don't remember. I believe Andy told me one time there is no rodeo club anymore. I guess, is it run by private people that. William Kennedy over here west of the shop called me and wondered if. I could put a load of gravel in there for him and. I just don't wanna get something started on doing something for private. And I, you know, I've been a while and I forgot kinda what we. Decided on the rodeo club anyway. Or the rodeo grounds, I mean.
The rodeo grounds is part of Clay County Park's. Oversight.
Okay. So then we'd be good to go to put a load of gravel in there, I guess.
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
I mean, that, it's the park now. They.
They'd have to pay.
I guess what I would look at the most, I would do is deliver it for them. Deliver it. They need to pay for the gravel.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean. If you're agreeable to that, Rod.
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, it's not a big deal, but I just don't wanna get started.
Right, how, how much are they asking for?
Uh, just one load, you know, so fifteen, fifteen tons, we're not talking. You know, a whole lot.
With all of the revamping that went through, I, they realized that. It, they're their own entity and need to be self-sufficient, so.
So would I've just making a bill out to the park board then?
Yeah, Dick, I think, can attest to it better than I can, because I haven't been involved since we kinda turned it back over to them, but.
Okay.
I would assume so.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been keeping up very well either, but yeah, that's my understanding is it should. Those sorts of things should all go through the parks board under the, the new system.
Okay, yeah, it's like a hundred and ten, eleven dollars is all. I, I wasn't too worried about that, I just don't wanna start. Down a slippery slope somewheres.
But I think you better tell Bill that it's gotta come from. The park board and not him individually.
Okay.
Just so when you send a bill, they don't go, what, what is this for?
Okay. Yeah, I'll give him, I'll give him a ring.
Yeah, they're, they're working at getting a lot better. Purchase and expenditure control through the board too, under the new system, so, yeah, it'll definitely have to be billed to the parks board.
Okay, sounds good.
I mean, is, is that what everybody wants to do or do we just step away? I mean, that was just a suggestion I threw out there, that doesn't.
Well, I actually agree, I think they're their own entity, they should, they should pay for it. But I think it's given in the, the trucking is part of, it's, it's a good deal.
Okay.
Just charge.
I think that's, that's something that's, that's, that, I think that's appropriate, what you got, what you have. Proposed there, that, that gravel's gotta come from Markort's pit then, Rod?
Well, it just come out of the yard here, we got a stockpile at the yard, we're talking half a mile, you know?
Okay.
That, that part isn't a problem. And I believe when we gravelled the, fixed the road to the. Uh, shooting. Trap place. Yeah, the gun club, I believe. I guess I don't remember who paid that bill, I think the gun club actually did, I don't remember.
How long ago was that?
That was just last summer before they had some big shoot down there.
Okay.
Went in and fixed all the potholes in the road.
Yeah, it seems to me like we did, that we did charge and then they paid for it that time. Cause I think we had that discussion then.
Did we do it the same way or did we just charge it for the gravel?
Uh, we just charged him for the gravel and I believe we billed him for an hour of the skid loader work.
Okay.
I didn't charge him for labor haul. On that.
Okay.
On that note, on the park board. Larry and I go through there. Yesterday. The weed department's old Ford pickup is sitting back there in the trees. That was donated to them back when Dusty was on the board. And just wondered if. Should we go get that also? They still have their little pickup they use. To drive around and. Check the place. But I didn't. I didn't wanna go get it without talking to anybody.
I'd say visit with Bill about that when you talk to him about the gravel.
Cause we did get our old M tractor back, they told us to go pull that out of there.
Well, so did. Uh, I wonder if that was surplus and donated to them or is it still ours?
Well, we were gonna sell it at Gerard's auction and Dusty went up and bought it back. So, and of course Gerard's discharged him the commission. Price of what it would have brought and then. We brought it back to the shop and then they come and got it later, so I just figured we donated it to him. But it's fine, we don't. I mean, we just use it maybe for parts or something, but it's pretty old, it's ninety-four, two fifty, you know?
Didn't Dusty buy it then? How about his personal money?
Well, they didn't charge him for it. They just charged. But who, who paid the commission?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think. I think the. Board of Commissioners, I'm not sure. Or Dusty was on the park board back then, maybe the park board paid it.
Well, Andy, Andy thinks the park board paid it, so. So then it's not our, it's not our pickup.
Okay, no problem.
And it's, it's been, it hasn't been licensed at all since then, right?
Don't believe it has.
But if it never left the grounds. Driving around where? Why? It's not public roads.
Well, when they first started using it, they'd come up here and get. The bucket full of gravel to fill some potholes.
I don't know.
But that's fine, I. Just thought I'd get it out of there, but they could keep it, I have no problem with that.
I suppose we can determine ownership by the VIN number, right? The title had to switch sometime.
Yeah.
If you can get a VIN number off of it. We can figure out who owns it.
Okay. We probably still, we probably still got it on the record here somewheres.
Yeah, see if it's on county property. List too.
I'm, I'm kind of remembering this now that I think about it. And I think the title is in the park board's name.
But we'll be able to figure that out, but if it went to Gerard's auction, we surplus it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And I think the title was switched to the park board.
Now, if the park board would give it back to you, that's one thing, but let's figure out who owns it first.
Well, I really don't, I really don't want it back, I guess we're gonna get it out there, it looks kinda. Bad just sitting back there in the trees and. And they got that cleaned up, getting it cleaned up, so, but no, that's fine, I'll look at it.
Yeah, I would, I would talk to Bill about that and then. It probably does go out on the Parks Road and up on Timber Road to get back and forth to your place, you know, if it's used as a service truck, it. They, they would, they would go out onto that, that, those two public roads while they're doing their. Other work, but likely not drive it into town, so that, I guess there's a. Point of question on whether it should be licensed or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's been out of the park for five, six years to any truth. I don't even know if it's run, because they have a little pickup with a yellow light on it, I believe is what they've been using, so.
Okay. So we'll move on to the Freightliner purchase.
Yeah, so since I put this on. I had conversation with the head guy in Sioux. I had conversation with the head guy in Sioux Falls at Freightliner and uh. So I got a sixty-seven hundred dollar. Charge. I'm not sure if that printed all that out because when I printed off. For myself, it didn't come through. I forwarded it to Kerry. First of May, they added twenty. Nine hundred dollars to it and then uh. Coming on the twenty-third of. Or the thirtieth of May, there's. A sixty or a. Forty-eight hundred dollars. It comes to sixty-seven dollar increase in the price and I said that. There's no way we're gonna pay that because we bought it off state bid. Well, it says up here, they're asking. Us to consider assisting them with the additional cost, so I. I called this Stacy Hammer up there and he said, yeah, not to worry about it. He said it, it'll still be the same price what we. Uh. Bought off the bid last October. So I, it was kind of a false alarm, I guess. I didn't realize that at the time I was. Ready to cancel the order. Whatever, but. So they said not to worry about it unless you guys really felt generous. And I pretty much figured I knew the answer to that already.
Yeah. So that's all you've got, right, Rod?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Rod? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't want to talk about this next one, so.
Yeah.
No, we got them working.
Let's see, there's only three of us.
Dick, you're gonna have to get here. There's four of them, five of them and only three, three of us here.
Yeah, you got Rod on there.
Oh, man, outnumbered. I don't.
I'm still here.
And they all came to the front.
Yeah.
It looks like the.
I'm glad you're all here.
Here, we'll make it official.
I'll, I'll give the speech of in these trying times.
Really appreciate your work.
But we just give, give you all the titles.
I know wasn't able to be here, but she would have been.
Oh, I forgot Kerry's here too, so there's six now.
Well, I'll just get you going. We uh, we had department head meeting and we're all getting ready to do our budgets for twenty twenty-three and to do that, we need the cola applied to the uh. The wage scale so we can project what our employees will be drawing next year. Department heads agreed at the meeting that we would come in and request a ten percent. The cola applied to the, across the board to the wage scale. Everybody can make, make their own points on, on purpose of that, but I, I, for my purpose, I'll talk about entry level pay. I want to raise entry level pay. Everybody's pay would go up with that.
Can I stop you one second, Andy? Just to clarify, you want ten percent cola? Plus the grades in the. I mean, if that, if they have that coming, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to interrupt that. That wouldn't be appropriate.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
We're looking at the, the spreadsheet of the wage scale. You apply the ten percent to the box A1 and it, it populates throughout. Uh, Kerry could probably better explain what the impact of this will have to the county budget. But uh, just in talking about in my office, um. What this will do, uh, I have a deputy, entry level deputy, uh, essentially zero experience, uncertified, that started eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents an hour right now. Ten percent cola applied to that would raise them to twenty dollars and thirty-two cents an hour. In comparison, right now, a Vermillion police officer starts at twenty-three dollars and six cents an hour right now. Yankton County Deputy starts at twenty-three dollars and forty cents. Um, Spink County Deputy starts at twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. And Edmonds County Deputy, that's a nip switch, starts at twenty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour. I have a lot of other agencies that I could compare us to, but that's just a few. And the case, even with a ten percent increase, we're still going to be in a neighborhood of ten percent less than other counties.
So what did you, did you say that the Vermont Police Department was?
Vermont Police Department with an uncertified, untrained high school graduate, twenty-three dollars and six cents.
In which your increase of ten percent, you'd be aware.
I would be at twenty dollars and thirty-two cents, so three dollars less after, after the increase, if we got a ten percent increase. They also pay more. They have incentives for college graduates. Uh, and so, um, Union County is comparable to us. But before we think that that is, is argument to not do it, I can tell you that they have struggled to maintain staff and to hire staff at that pay.
But you, your twenty dollar, that's untrained also?
That would be an uncertified, untrained.
So that's apples, apples.
Okay, yeah. Uh, we, we struggled to hire. Um, we, it took us from, geez, I can't even remember how long we've had an opening, but uh, since I believe September. It took us until just last week to fill that position. Uh, the deputy that came took a pay cut. He came from uh. Uh, JDC in Sioux Falls. He took a pay cut. Uh, one advantage was he already lived in Vermillion, so he doesn't have to commute, but. You know, people are taking pay cuts to, to come work here and I think the other department heads can, can describe what their employees have done. In terms of uh. Retention or hiring, so. So in any case, my, my point is, I guess my argument for ten percent across the board is just to, to, to bring us halfway to equity with other agencies.
I'll let others talk.
Jump in uh, from there, you know, ten percent, we, we talked extensively as a group about what to come here for and ask. And, you know, it wasn't just plucked out of thin air. Um, there was thought that went into that. Some of those things as we looked at, so what is cola projected to be for twenty twenty-three? And um, the Senior Citizens League, the current projected cola for twenty twenty-three is set to be eight point nine percent. They said that that's a staggering three percent higher than twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two is five point nine percent. And so if we look back at that, and that's not what we thought when we all came in and talked to you guys a year ago. Um, everybody here knows and has felt the impact of cost of everything. From fuel to groceries to um, taxes on our, on, on property and I understand that some of that isn't related directly to cola, but it's a reality. Our employees with a two percent across the board last year have lost money.
Is that what we did was to?
Yeah. And so, um, so when we try to make up for time value of money of them losing money this year, make up for that plus the projected eight point nine. Um, that's why we're here asking for the ten percent. Um, I also had taken um, just a position that I did commit and I appreciated last year when we were struggling to hire. Um, and we talked to you guys about, I talked to you about our deputy state's attorney position. Kind of like Andy as far as those starting salaries and, and I appreciated that you guys bumped that up by three um. Grades, but I had talked about, you know, I went out looking for other comparables and really to make it comparable and competitive with other counties like Paddington and some of the other counties. I didn't realize how far behind we had gotten in such a short period of time with, with you guys making some of the strides that we had. And they were advertising for starting salary, unexperienced attorney at seventy-two thousand. We bumped that grade up and we got starting salary of sixty-six thousand. If I take that sixty-six thousand, multiply it and get us the ten percent increase, we get to the seventy-two. So just like, you know, Andy's situation, obviously they're, they're worse off. Um, but that was essentially two years ago at the seventy-two thousand. So I don't, I haven't paid attention because thank God for once, we're in a position where we're looking to hire right now. Um, but I would say that's consistent. It's consistent on the micro scale of an individual position. And it's consistent on a macro scale when we look at that, um, consumer price index and cola and all of those things. Everybody's just felt we have more draws on everybody's paycheck. And aren't keeping up with the, the money to, to keep people, so.
So what, uh, what last year, cause we do pay cola, correct? Or not?
Oh, we pay CPI.
Okay, so what's?
And last year CPI was, I believe, one point seven.
Okay, so we played you, we gave raises last year, two percent plus the one point seven.
No, two. Just two.
Just two, okay. So what we're projecting this year then is if we do what you guys are saying. We go by cost of living?
No, we're going by ten percent.
Do we know, well, do we know what CPI is yet?
Right, that's what I'm getting.
CPI is three percent.
You're kidding.
And, and I will say that. The life of my career here at the county, I have always wondered how the state comes up with that because it is incredibly low. It doesn't match like real world. It doesn't match the real world.
Yeah.
At all, um.
No, I can see.
I will say state employees are getting sixty-eight percent raises. And they're saying that they will still be eight point nine percent below market for South Dakota and for the surrounding six states. Um, Walmart personal shoppers for online orders are getting about nineteen bucks an hour. I, I had a friend tell me they went to tip their personal shopper. And they said, I'm sorry, we can't pay, we can't accept tips, but they are paying us nineteen dollars an hour. And when you look at that, starting ways like for my department, Rhonda's apartment, you know? Three dollars and seven cents below Walmart. And so a ten percent increase would only get us basically half of that difference. So we'd still be below Walmart.
So what is your starting?
Fifteen ninety-three.
What?
Fifteen ninety-three.
And, and if you look at, so I'm just right out on the US Bureau of Labor Statistics and this is the CPI Midwest region of March twenty twenty-two. Midwest region is gonna cover. Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Michigan, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, North Dakota, Ohio, South Dakota, Wisconsin. So I don't know where the state's getting that or if they were just that far behind too. But all urban consumers advanced one point three percent in March. The US Bureau of Labor Statistics reported today. That factoring everything over the last twelve months, the CPIU rose eight point six percent. So even the CPI for a Midwest region, I know that's not just South Dakota, but I'll be curious to see what they come up with for this year because.
She said three.
Three.
For, for this time, at three, and I have no idea how they come up with that. No idea. Because. We all know that and then they break down food prices, increased one point four percent for the month of March. Their food prices were ten point three percent higher than a, um, than a year ago. Energy costs, five percent in the past year. I mean, everything costs more. We've got organizations we're members of right now. I'll be curious to see where that comes from an overall budget standpoint, because I just got noticed dues are getting increased on one of our deals. Haven't been increased since twenty twelve.
I was gonna mention that uh, Nehaw County, just I think it was across the board for the entire county was a ten percent cola. Is what they had just approved. There, I don't know what a Minnehaw County deputy starts. I believe it's something like twenty-five dollars an hour, but I know a Minnehaw County deputy that have an advertised, or Minnehaw County jailer. Starts at twenty-three oh one and then will be getting a ten percent increase. That's a jailer. At Minnehaw County, so we had a Minnehaw County jailer apply to us as a, for a deputy position and, and went on and on in the uh. Interview about how he hoped to get certified and then asked if we have a contract that requires him to stay here. All he wanted to do is go back to Minnehaw County. And so, um, it, so we're competing with all around, but uh, you know, I could compare it to Minnehaw County and Paddington County and you know the numbers can be different, but DCI. They, they hire a college graduate with zero experience is gonna start at twenty-three dollars. And sixty-one cents an hour, but they're working, they will be getting an increase and that's gonna be around thirty dollars an hour. And that's an un-inexperienced cop, fresh college graduate. They're, they're not gonna take you without the college degree. So they're at thirty dollars an hour. Our, our experienced people don't get that.
But you're saying if, you're saying the CPI was about eight point six, correct?
As a, uh, yeah, Bureau of Labor and Statistics is.
For today.
For Midwest region, including all the states and I mean, South Dakota's included in that. I don't know where, I don't know where the state got.
So if you go for the ten, that'd be eight point six. If you went for ten, it basically would be giving the eight point six if we gave you the CPI. And if you go up to ten, it'd be a one point four percent rate.
Except that we lost money this last year. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Right. Okay, in the states, three?
Three, yeah.
But they're still giving a higher.
Yeah, sixty-eight percent, so.
Yeah, I know, but I mean.
And recognizing that they're still almost nine percent low.
Right.
For the region.
Yeah, US DPD, their entry levels, uh, you know. Zero experiences is over twenty-two dollars now, but they're getting six percent. Applied to that. So argument is even at ten percent, we're still considerably lower than everybody else and they're still, and they're getting raises.
What, what will twelve or fifteen percent do to us, for us?
That's question Kerry, so. Well, so ten percent on wages and this doesn't factor in overtime. About two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Of an increase on wages for next versus this year. Twelve point six because I got to twelve point six because that was the three point seven. That they said there was a cost of increase for this year plus the eight point six, right? I think I come up with twelve point six. I used twelve point six. That's, I used twelve point six as I thought that was the math, the numbers you gave me, so I just added them together. Those two numbers you gave me minus the two percent we gave you for this year.
Okay.
To try and.
Okay.
Catch people up.
Okay.
That's three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. I think what. I think what, and I could be wrong. This is just me spitballing, but I think what we're gonna need to do. Is you, you're gonna have to go back. And. I don't think the cold is gonna. It's not a long-term solution. You need to go back, do the math. What's it gonna cost me to replace this person? What number does that get us? I mean, it's gonna be a scary number. I mean, Walmart's paying seventeen to just walk in the door. Um. If you were to replace. Yeah, I mean, if you had to replace Sarah, what's it gonna cost you today to do that? I think that's the number we have to look at. What are you gonna have to pay to get somebody? I mean. We're saving money by not filling positions, but we're not doing the job.
Yeah.
Figure out what, what that number is gonna do to your office so we can get an accumulative number. And then add, then add the cola to it. We could do a five. And do an eight, I. I don't, I don't know what else to do to get us to where we need to be.
The department hit, department hit on top of that.
Well, they're gonna have.
Yeah.
I mean, they were figured in, they were figured in the, the total number there with the.
And that's what we're, we were talking about applying it to the entire scale, all employees, but I, that's why I looked at entry level because that's when I replaced generally, you're gonna replace people with entry level. Ideally by applying that across the board, maybe we don't lose people higher up as easily.
Right.
Have to replace them at your level, but.
Well, I guess that's what I was looking at is what that entry level person's gonna be, what, to replace an open spot, no matter how they left.
Yeah.
What's that gonna cost? Because then that's just gonna. That's just gonna cascade what you do to the other employees you already have.
Sure, and I, and I don't, it's hard to really say what drives people to apply for positions. But I find it interesting that the Vermont Police Department and I are both hiring. We've both been in the hiring process for the last six, eight months. And we, we've only had in two or three cases where people have applied to both. They're hiring people I've never heard of. They're not applying to us. Our, our wages are advertised just like theirs are and they're just not even applying to us. The one that we just hired, Victor Allen, uh, applied to both and we got him first. And, and he was, and he, he, he stayed, uh, he stayed the course and, and withdrew his application with, with PD, but. Um, they would have paid him a lot more.
You know, and are we, you know, you, we gotta figure benefits in there too. I don't, I would assume you're not getting health insurance at Walmart.
Yeah.
Or are you, they are.
Yeah.
You only have to work hard time to get.
Are they paying for it then or?
I believe so. I think they have a pretty good benefit package from what I understand.
Okay.
But I do know, on the board it says that, we went from thirteen dollars. To sixteen dollars. To seventeen dollars and thinking eighteen. Because we can't not bill anything at thirteen. We couldn't bill anything at sixteen and we're thinking eighteen the last time. And we have, the biggest problem we have there is we have to keep looking at our budget if we can sustain it, same way we're here, you know? No different. You can say, yep, I'm willing to give you ten percent or whatever, but if I can't hold that the next year. I'm kinda screwed.
Yeah, it's tough, but yeah, Travis, you asked about what it costs to replace people and.
Yeah.
You know, I'd be looking at uh, Yankton, Vermillion and you know, comparable surrounding a, agencies or even if I look at some of these very rural counties, Spink and Edmonds County. And a twenty percent increase and I'm not even there and I can't sit here and ask you for twenty percent across the board.
I think that was the other contemplation from us is I know ten percent is a lot and nobody's ever come in and we haven't come in and asked for something like that before because it's hard to hear. I think that was the other contemplation from us, is I know ten percent is a lot, and nobody's ever come in, and we haven't come in and asked for something like that before, because it's hard to hear. But also from a realistic standpoint, felt like doing right by our people, we can't ask for anything less.
But how do we, like in Andy's situation, how does he hire anybody?
His department may need to be treated differently.
Well, and that's what I was just wondering too. I mean, if you can't, if you can, we can give you a ten percent raise, but if you can't fill those spots, it didn't do you any good.
Yeah, I, I don't know what to tell you there, I, I, um, once I applied that raise, and if I had my entry level pay be twenty dollars and thirty-two cents an hour, I'd feel a lot more comfortable, I'd get more apps.
And, and I would say that's consistent with the climate right now, trying to convince people to come into the lawn first field. I mean, maybe it's ten percent for all the rest of us, that's twenty for them.
Yeah, I know you got a lot tougher, yeah. Does the city have, does the city police department have any openings? Cause.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe Elin told me they had four the other day.
Yeah, they just, they just filled, well, in recent weeks, they filled three positions. They have one person that's already in training and two starting, I believe, on the ninth. And, uh, and I think that's still leaves them with a couple of positions.
They're three dollars higher than you are.
Yeah, well, no, they're five dollars.
Oh, five dollars right now, right.
Ina asked me to just relay for her, so she couldn't be there. She's been, you know, she's trying to hire with Laura retiring. She said even ten percent would be low for her office too. And she's really not getting, she's really not getting applications, I think she's had a few, but they haven't.
And we're offices that don't, you know, like, obviously there are offices that have a specific training, like, we could pretty much, and, and hopefully I don't ever have to replace Christina for like forever, because I don't want to, but, but you know, it's like, I know, like, it's, we need entry level, and we can't even compete with, with that.
And then retention's important to you then.
Yes.
Cause you said you're fifteen ninety-seven?
Fifteen ninety-three.
Fifteen ninety-three. I mean, a twelve point six percent raise is the two dollars, that gets you competitive with Walmart.
Right.
Yeah, that's probably, see, like I said, I'll says that, that's what we're ready to. We can't, we can't hire anybody, and we're hiring you right now.
Right.
I mean, I'm not the person, but I'd rather do your job than, than do theirs, I think they've got a very demanding job, I mean, those house people, but definitely.
Well, and honestly, back when I moved here, if I could have got a county job, I would have been so thrilled as a twenty-five-year-old to get a county job.
Right.
And now, it's like, well, I would, I wanna go work at the county, what I can go to Walmart, or I can go to, you know, I don't know about like Hy-Vee, but I can go to a grocery store and.
Yeah, no, I hear you. And I know you guys know that's a sicker shock, just like we do, cause you know, you guys work here. You don't wanna see, go down Main Street, somebody say, we got, you got a twelve percent raise, you got a ten percent raise, you know, but.
Appreciate you guys being willing to listen and have this conversation though, and not just, I mean, I know there was jokes at the beginning of this, but really, like, appreciate that.
Well, we need to figure out how to fix this.
Yes.
It's a very realistic problem that we need to face.
Cause when did we, Phyllis, when did we do this the last time? Was it been five years now?
It was what, where we tried.
Where we did the steps, we.
The whole step and get it more.
And that's one thing that happened, you did, uh, you were, you were shooting for, I think, seven steps over three years, and I remember, I think you did, I think you did three steps one year, two steps the next year, not steps grades, you moved the whole everybody's positions up. Then on the third year, instead of doing the grades, you did the COLA, because during those times, there was no COLA applied to the scale.
Right.
And so there was just the grades, which was good, but then the, the scale stayed the same. You know, the, and, but everybody, their positions moved up, but the, the position itself didn't get an increase. And then, uh, then on the third year, you just did a COLA, now it's been a couple of years, we've worked on issues with department heads, but.
It's almost back down to where we were.
You just, if you don't keep going, you lose it, uh, the momentum.
Yeah.
It's just if you, if you sit back for a year or two, you're gonna fall behind. And I know how hard it is, and, and you folks have done a, done a ton for us over these past several years, but it's just so hard to keep up. When everybody else is just going with their foot to the floor.
Like my office is kind of a, I'll just say, kind of a different situation. Every, every person working in my office right now left the job they were at and took a pay cut to come work here at the county. And the reasons were, you know, better hours, no weekends, no holidays, I mean, so there was a specific, you know, probably family-driven reason why they did that. But I mean, they all worked out in the public sector, and they've taken a pay cut just to come work with us.
But the problem is, we've trained them now, some other job can come along that pays more, that gives the exact same benefits.
Right.
And then we lose them.
That training cost.
Well, it's, yeah, it, it's a sunk cost, you just can't realize it.
Oh, you're, they're really not, take about six months to a year before they really.
Yeah. Yeah. If speaking for the second floor offices, uh, and, and difference with mine and Alexis and Rod and Ina, in that we, we can hire people with some skills that we're gonna give them. We could bring them in from the outside as a certified deputy, or a, a driver with a CDL, or, or an attorney with prior experience. Generally, your second floor offices, you're, it's, it's entry level, but you do invest in them, you give them the training. So generally, they're not gonna hire people from the outside at the higher level unless it's, you know, a registered needs deputy from a different county, but, but yet they invest multiple years into those people, and it's important to keep them if you can.
And we wanna keep them. I mean, I think I could speak for all three of us, that we like our staff, and we want to keep our staff and.
Well, it, the, the problem is it never fails, you, when you lose somebody, you don't have somebody waiting to show up next day.
Yes.
Right.
And when you're a.
Then we get behind.
That could really be, I mean, that could be a scary thought.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, oh, with Drew on, during all those discussions, Drew and I are single-person offices. And we completely understand what everybody's going through. And it gets to the point where, like Andy said, once you get them in, they, they tend to stay once they've been here for a while, and it would be really nice if, uh, you could get it all worked out so that opening entry level can get up. Um, I just wanted to pass along that I equated it to back when I had bowling center. In two thousand twenty-two years ago, for me to have the same purchasing power today as I had twenty-two years ago, I would have to be at ninety-five thousand two hundred between two thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. Now, I absolutely do not expect you to double my salary. But, um, and we like our jobs, and that's what we wanted to get across too, that, you know, it's not necessarily a money, trying to be a money grab situation. So.
I have rarely lost a deputy to another agency over money. It has happened, but typically, um, not. If we could just get them in the door, we treat them right, and, and their pay is somewhat equal, we tend to do okay, even though I see some of my five and ten-year people getting paid less than entry level, right across the hall or right down the road. We're not losing them, but hiring is difficult. And, but if we raise entry level and raise everybody else the same amount of COLA, I think that'll really help.
Yeah, I'd like to butt in just a second. Agreeing with everybody else, and this is one of the, uh, younger crews that have ever been out to the county since I've been here in the twenty-seven years, and I've heard a little bit about, you know, where they could go to make more money, but they are pretty happy working here, and, you know, we had a lot of older people over the years and retiring, and we still have a few of us old guys still left here, hand gal. But, um, yeah, they're, you know, if even the ten percent would, for my new hire, would barely make it to eighteen dollars. So, you know, I agree with Lane, ain't here just to try to be a money grab, but we do need some help, I'm afraid.
When do we kinda start planning for this, or how do we wanna go about? Like, when do we need to make a decision so that we start plugging numbers into our budget?
It's eleven fifty right now.
Yep.
You need to work on it pretty quick.
You guys, like, this week typically. So probably next week, we need to start working on budgets.
Yeah, whatever you work on your budget, yeah.
I just think it'll be kinda discombobulated for you guys, I mean, other than possibly as, as we sit here, I mean, this, this is just kinda what I'm hearing, other than possibly Andy's department, who maybe really should be, you know, higher than, I mean, is there a starting point? Otherwise, you, you guys are gonna get all sorts of varying budgets from us submitted. Whereas you usually like, it's like, alright, here's what we're looking at, and Carrie plugs the number in and gives us the spreadsheet, and then we use that to base off our grade steps for our people. So what you get in the end is not like, where did we come up with that? She can tell you where we came up with that because, for salaries at least, and then we kinda come in, that's, I don't know.
Is it too cumbersome to, to have each individual office figure out what they need? I mean, you can still do it collectively, but you can still bounce ideas off each other, what, what are you doing?
I think we just need to keep Carrie in the loop then on. So like, for instance, if we move our people around in a separate fashion, yeah, I mean, she's, she's gonna have to know long-term where we end up, so that then she can keep track when it's time for a separating.
Yeah.
I think you need to cross the board numbers though.
What, what I, my suggestion is, is if, for example, we're gonna do a ten percent increase, that's in cell A one on the thing, and it applies to the entire scale. If we were looking at having different people get different amounts, don't be talking about a different COLA for the sheriff's office. What we do is we revisit the grade that that deputy. Yes, so right now, a deputy is, I think, an, uh, uncertified deputy starts in grade twenty-three. Once they get certified, they go to grade twenty-four. So you might say, well, we're gonna start the uncertified deputy in grade twenty-five, when they get certified to go to twenty-six and so on, rather than to have a different percent.
Right.
I guess what I'm asking today is a, a, a percent COLA applied to the salary scale, so then we can work with that structure for what our budget is, then if I wanna make a case that my people need to be hired, I'll do that, and it doesn't.
Right, but I.
Doesn't bring everybody else into it.
So that's what I had mentioned before, when you, you know, what's it gonna take to replace, retain, and then use a five or a ten?
Yes, I think that, um, I think that.
So we can look at those numbers.
Absolutely, I think that, that what we're asking for is for you to establish a COLA to the scale, then we'll all look at it. I know Alexis had talked about, well, if she could hire a legal secretary with, with a degree, could she start her higher? Well, she was looking at, at, at a point in the, in the scale, well, that might affect future, uh, steps, where if, if her entry level for somebody with that level was step one, but a greater five grades higher or whatever, then, then where she's at right now, then she would be, it, this, it would make sense. Then that person would get steps along the way. But that's for the department heads to, to take up with the commission on where their people should land on the scale in terms of grades, grades are jobs and skills, steps are longevity. And so, but the COLA, that's a whole nother thing, that applies to the scale.
So when that's grades and steps was implemented, I mean, things have changed so much, does, does that even work anymore?
I think it works better than what I had before, that's why I'm so defensive of it. You know, before we, before we had that, it was, it was, uh, Dusty rounded it up from Minnehaw County, and we based it on that. Before we had that, the commissioners may or may not give a fifty dollar a month raise to all employees regardless of job skill, longevity, or performance. You just got fifty dollars a month.
Every county has the grade and stem scale.
They do now, yeah, I, I, I have a copy of Brookings, it's similar to ours. The numbers aren't, but. Are amazingly different, but, uh, yeah, it's a similar scale, and it's based on position.
So can you guys give us that about where that bumps up, and then on an individual basis, like, we look and assess now with that, and we, and we compare, you know, do we think we can hire for, if that bumps, you know, their offices up to X amount per hour, do you think they could replace somebody? Or do, do we individually have to come in and be like, hey, Carrie, by the way, taking the numbers you gave us, I bumped this position up to grade whatever. So that's gonna affect those, uh, cause I think that gets us to where you're talking about Travis, is like, that, that's how we individually assess it after that, uh, could we replace somebody at starting level entry position with that wage? Or do we have to mess with the, the grades for the position?
Yeah, I agree.
See, I like that idea, I like that idea.
Is the twelve.
What Andy's asking about is, is, uh, apply ten percent to the whole matrix, right? The, the whole box.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna do twelve.
Well, that's what I'm saying, with all of that, is the twelve at least a little more logical?
Well, so, I think before we can, I think before we can answer that question, we're gonna need to figure out how much, um, what our income, what our revenue is gonna be for the year over last year. But we should be able to figure that out by, whenever we have, we're not having a meeting next Tuesday, correct, we're having it the following?
Right, so what I, what I find tricky about the whole process is, you know, the state says we can increase our property taxes by three percent, cause that's CPI plus our growth. I don't really know growth until about August. So when I'm getting, when I'm getting your guys' budgets ready, it's a projected growth. And then that first week in August is when I have like really the good numbers, which it doesn't change a lot, but.
But we'll know what that, what we're supposed to collect this year.
I mean, that's, that's really, aside from like if Rhonda's taking in more license plate fees, or you know, if Lisa's got something that she's gotten the works, other than that, I mean, the property taxes are, are pretty much our, our revenue source.
Right, and we should know what they're gonna be this year already, cause we're already paying them, so we already know what, what that number should be.
I mean, that we know.
So do we know what that, and, I mean, can we figure out what that increase is gonna be over last year?
For, for next year? I can't, I mean.
Well, no, just.
Because I can, I can get an estimated growth number.
Cause we estimated what we're collecting this year for this year's budget and.
Right, but by the time that you pass the final budget, I knew what it was gonna be, because I have the final growth, which doesn't come until like August, so.
Wouldn't we start with twelve, and if you guys, if the numbers don't come in, you gotta change that.
Yeah.
You gotta change it. Or do you want us to start with, I mean.
Like I said.
Like, you know, I feel like it's, it's always easier to start higher and back off if you need to, than it is to start low and.
Bump up.
Yeah.
I agree.
So the twelve point six percent, and this was based on last year's, this year's, what, what we, we're gonna pay this year, not counting overtime. It's three hundred and fifty-seven thousand roughly. Increase. Overtime probably wouldn't have a hard time hitting four hundred thousand.
So you scored a thousand in, in growth over last year, is that a reasonable number, do you think?
If we're gonna increase that. Oh.
No. On property taxes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything else pretty much had to hold a line for close.
Which it's not going to.
Maybe we try.
I mean, I think, I think like for my department, I haven't seen a massive increase in, I mean, paper's gone up a little bit, you know, things like that, but the biggest increases are gonna be Rod's department with the road supply is.
And Andy's.
I'm trying to spread my projects out year by year, so I don't have everything come one year.
But your fuel bill's gonna be.
Fuel, yeah.
It's gonna be.
A gallon of gas, I think, you know, I think this year is based on about three fifty a gallon of gas, so.
Building maintenance.
We know that one's gonna be higher, cause we've never had, feel anybody doing it. And that'll be the other thing, whoever has building, any maintenance in their budget won't have that going forward now. That'll be in, on, that'll be all for Scott now.
Which was my concept, which, which salary becomes the building rather than.
You guys feel comfortable? The minutes reflecting a twelve point six percent increase for counting employees?
Is gonna have to, I mean, it's, it's, it's a starting point.
We've got, I mean, we've got it up, like, we've done our research. None of us have come in here and just thought, hey, I think it'd be great to do ten percent, or hey, I think it'd be great to do fifteen, just arbitrarily, like, we've all researched this, and we've all done our work.
Absolutely, and I, and I can say, I know that even at ten percent, we're still ten percent less than everybody else. I mean, I guess it's gotta reflect in there one way or the other.
Yeah.
Let the chips fall in the rain, I mean, they've screamed that before.
And the public is very aware of what. And the public is very aware of what Walmart and others are paying.
Yeah.
What I would suggest though is to keep in mind is, as we said, we've done, we've done leaps and bounds and then paused and you lose ground so fast. You know, personally, rather than say, let's go twelve, twelve this year and then two next year. You know, I'd rather see you go, you know, eight or ten and then six or eight next year, you know, and try to try to keep up instead of always catching up.
But twelve point six gets us back to, gets us there. That just gets us caught up. That, that doesn't get us ahead.
That's right. Yep. And then, but so then if you pause the next year or the next two years, you're gonna be twelve percent behind again. And so, you know, let's not forget what's gonna happen in the next year. Rather than enormous increase one year and then a pause for two years, I don't think that's gonna accomplish, accomplish what we need.
Do we get a motion on that?
I don't think so, because we're not, I mean, not just giving them a number to work on.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say is, I mean, you guys are still gonna ultimately have to approve budget numbers. And some departments, depending on where that falls out, might end up needing to ask you for more. I mean, it just, it just completely depends. And then, and then the revenue might come in even after you pass the preliminary and you might feel like.
At this point, we just need to know what the, the scale is gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For us to work with when we start crunching the numbers.
Yeah.
Is what the percentage is in cell A one on that pay scale.
Cause we really don't approve wages until December. For some reason.
Well.
You kind of prove it.
We did look last year. I, I tried to get all that payroll put together about the same time as budget. So you guys can approve it together. Last year just didn't happen. It got away from me, so.
Something every year, though. We get budget approved and then in December, we're getting paid approved. Yeah, I don't know why that is.
Yeah, I try to do it at the same time and a lot of counties don't do it till January.
Yeah, I.
And that makes no sense to me because if you're budgeting for it and you're approving that budget, then you could just as well approve it.
I have had, I have had county commissions and none of you folks. I've had county commissions in December say, we can't afford it, can't afford that pay. Like, you just approved the budget three months ago and, and it's in there. Of course you can afford it.
But pushing it off till January, you could have a new board.
Yeah.
I think be like, no.
Yeah, I think it makes the most sense to do it about the same time and that's what I did last year. It just got away from me, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
So I'm pay scale, like plugging in twelve point six in that first cell then.
So, not to put another wrinkle in this. Say we can't do the twelve point six. Say we can get somewhere close. Is it, is it a benefit to add? To give the employees another two days of vacation? To do it some, is that a bad deal? Okay, I'm just asking.
I don't think it.
Anybody deals with overtime on the regular and holiday pay and everything, it's gonna be a better spot to answer that.
I can't get these guys out the door to take the vacation they have.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, if we can't give you cash, what perk can we give? That's, that was my only.
I told these guys in the department head meeting about years ago, before I was a deputy, when the sheriff's office in lieu of a raise was told they could drive their patrol cars for personal use. This is, this, no, I don't know what kind of perk you, I appreciate that. I, I, I'll think about that, but don't, yeah, that's not.
Well, that's why I'm asking you. It's just.
But I, I appreciate just that sentiment as well, just the appreciation. I mean, I've listened to some of these horror stories and I'm like, thank goodness that, you know. Appreciate you guys.
Well, I remember when I was supervising before I was postmaster, post office. They have supervisor, everybody's got unions in that post office, by the way. And so we had a supervisory union. So they made a deal with the postal service that we would not get a raise. Okay, as a supervisor, we get cost of living. And we could, at the end of the year, if you did well enough, that whatever factors also in that, you could get a bonus. So bottom line, you, you got that bonus. And that bonus never went onto your salary. Because you just got a bonus. So if you, if you were making fifty thousand dollars, you made fifty thousand dollars next year. And if you got a bonus, you got whatever that was. So your salary never went up. So pretty soon, you were still here and the bonuses never got, the most you could ever get out of the bonus was like four thousand dollars. So you know, you're right there all the time.
I see Chevy Chase Christmas vacation, you're buying a pool. Christmas vacation, you're buying a pool, waiting on that bonus.
I mean, it was just.
Well, I worked at a place that, I've been there for two or three years, they increased the starting wage. And it was a penny less than what I was making and they expected me to train that person.
Yeah, you gotta take, gotta take them all up together.
I go, why don't I quit? I'll come back for a penny less and I don't, I can act like I don't need to know anything for six months.
That's, it's the responsibility level.
Shields did that, does that, did that too. We used to do that. When I was, I was doing it for three years, the only raise I ever got was one minimum wage one. And I replaced, trained my replacement at the same rate of pay. Well, hopefully we can get this worked out.
I think we can. We can figure.
Get enough taxes to, and tax people more. That's what people are gonna say, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I know Andy's been here long enough that he, I'm pretty sure he's thrilled that we're even considering talking about it. Cause he's, you've heard.
I appreciate the, what you folks have done with these last ten, ten years toward our pay. I mean, it's, it's great. I mean, just that you're talking about, you're trying. I, 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 I said sincerity and I appreciate that.
I remember that. I remember that story you told where you, where Dusty came in and the guy, one commissioner just started reading the paper.
Yeah.
And we all appreciate it. I mean, those of us that have been around for a while can remember when you used to hear, well, we can't, we can't raise the pay because then we'll make more than, you know, the secretaries at USD and you know, those are the kind of things that we used to hear. And even USD has, I mean, the state has acknowledged that their wages are low and they're trying to do something about it, so. It's not just us, but.
And so when you start talking numbers and I grab my phone, I'm not ignoring you. I'm on my, I'm on my calculator. I'm punching numbers already.
You know, I like the idea though, it's what you said about if you have trouble, uh, hiring somebody is moving that grade up. Instead of maybe you go to, and maybe in basically what Lexi says, your office is unique, a lot more unique than anybody else is here. Not putting you guys down, but, but very much so. And so I think that it's, if you got to move it, if somebody coming in at twenty-three and needs actually be at twenty-five, so you can get a little better, so you can, so you can actually hire him.
But that's a ripple effect in his office then too.
I know.
Yeah.
I need to move all the grades.
Yeah.
Like I take the grade twenty-three, which is grade twenty-three is on twenty-three now, which is grade twenty-three starting level. If I move that up two grades, then everybody moves up two grades. Otherwise, I'm gonna lose my span.
Yeah.
And there's no incentive.
Right. No.
And that's kind of exactly what you said. What you were doing with your job.
Yeah.
Yeah. No incentive. But, but I think you gotta look at that. You know, and see without, how's that gonna affect you? Cause I mean, you can't hire people. You gotta do something.
Oh, we gotta have law enforcement.
Absolutely.
That's, that's the scale with the numbers that carries this providers. I'll look at it. If I still don't think competitive, then I'll talk to you in my budget request.
Okay.
A great change.
Yeah.
I think we're in agreement though, what.
So I think you can give us a number of twelve point six. And then if you could just give us a side number of ten percent. Cause it's just ten percent of wages. I mean, it's just another, just one more footnote right on the side of.
Yeah.
The difference.
Yesterday, I sat down and did, you know, plugged everybody in with the, the grades that they're at now. And if I have on my schedule that they're due for a step, now I didn't think about certifications for any of your jailers or things like that, that would bump them up a grade. But I just went steps and the grade they're at now with, with the ten percent scale. So I mean, I could easily do that with a twelve point six percent scale. And then I'll have both the numbers there so that when you guys get ready to do your budgets, you just have to look at it and see if that's right where they're gonna fall with the grading stuff. And if it's not, then adjust it from there, but at least you have a start, so.
Excellent.
I, I did that yesterday. I think this will have these numbers kind of ready.
Cause do most of you have steps in your office that are gonna be applied this year?
I think I have.
Once they've been around a while, they start spreading out.
Yeah.
It's not every year. If you have a bunch of new people, they always.
I have a couple.
So, so you've got new people.
Yeah.
Rod's got new people. Well, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, thank you.
More?
Sam and I were incorrect. We both met out there and looking at it.
I love, let's get that on the recording.
Sam and, Sam and I both met out in the fenced in area and we both went, huh, it's the radiator that comes through there and not the exhaust. So. The cooling system goes through the, the tunnel, but the exhaust does run up through the room.
But how much money did you lose?
Um, that would be up to Sam to buy Andy lunch, I think, is.
I like that. I was gonna say, I told you so.
No, no, the other thing.
Do we, you do adjourn here?
Yeah. If nobody has anything else.
It was literally Sam and I, I walked in, Sam followed me and said, oh. By the way, they did, they did, this will be real quick. Cherry Center did, they came with the excavator, they haven't started doing any of it. The excavator is actually sitting there now. He's gonna do part of it this, this spring maybe. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have motion and a second roll call.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank you.